I didn't realize that I could let you all for a walk on time.
Sound like the sky in theaters, comes by the bucket.
I told her, I told her, I didn't know if I should go walking over to the end of the drive. Hold it up.
Close that. There you go. We got this.
Oh, yeah.
That way I won't forget it. That's, that's still my hat. Well, I have to take an oath, obviously, for the pledge of prayer, so I just. Hey, good morning, everyone. There'll be door prizes wherever last, uh, through the whole entire meeting today. We have a long agenda. Very little bit of extra pad. Good morning, everyone. I ask you to please rise. There'll be prayer and pledge of allegiance before we convene the municipal meeting. Dearly Father, as we close another year and season of life, we ask you to continue to sustain us each day. We have witnessed many difficulties and challenges over the past year. We know your love, grace, hope, and wisdom is there with us. We know that you're there every moment of time, and that's in your hands. We are thankful, as we present the final budget today, that you've provided the means for our county. We ask you for the wisdom going forward, that we always make decisions that are in accordance with your will. Father, we especially pray for Commissioner Musser, Mayor Vito this morning, as they enter their chapter of life. We thank you for their lives and dedicated service to the county. May you bless them with good health, as they turn this page to the next. We pray for the new year to be one with your blessings showering upon us. May our words and actions make a positive, encouraging impact to each other. We ask you for your guidance throughout the meeting. In these things, we humbly pray in your name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance, the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, good morning. We're convening the Commissioners' Public Meeting at this time. We ask for approval of the minutes of previous meeting. All clear, say aye?
Aye.
Do you have any public comment? Yes. Morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Ladies, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I have a fairly short prepared statement I'd like to read.
Now, please introduce yourself.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Tom Shack, Pens Dale.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, as you close out 2023, and with it, many accomplishments, as well as challenges, you appear to be on the cusp of moving forward with the process of reassessment for all county properties. There was a seemingly compelling argument offered by the Assessment Office at the meeting on December the 14th, outlining the rationale behind a comprehensive reassessment. While the presentation did explain the process that examines the current values of property and examples of aligning fair and equitable values to potentially under-tax parcels and improvements, it did little to allay the fears of increased tax liability on already stressed citizens. Truth be told, the millage would be adjusted to reflect a neutral impact on reassessed properties, but what was not explained in detail was the fact that this grace period would only be for the time needed to complete the county as a whole and enter the newly revised data into a computer program. Municipalities and school districts alike will undoubtedly use this data to bolster their own coffers. Some may be necessarily so, but the majority will only develop healthier budgets of their own to support their agendas. All this comes in the back of the individual taxpayer or small business, who in many cases are living paycheck to paycheck, given the inflationary spiral that we are all experiencing. Yet, in the same breath, there are tax abatements and other breaks given to some developers, ostensibly with the hope that in the long run, the rewards to the county coffers will be a positive dividend, given the initial outlier deferral of real-time revenue. The everyday citizen or small business owner is never given a break, only the demand to again open their already slim wallet. I stood here on the 14th of December and stated many of the concerns that I again bring to the podium. To that end, nothing has changed regarding our citizens' ability to juggle the cost of medication, food, and utilities, heating being the most important sector given this time of year. We have all heard stories of seniors making impossibly tough decisions as to what bills to pay, what medications to split or to be stopped altogether, or how to minimize expenses from a myriad of other nightmares. No one can sit here and honestly say that the reassessment will not result in increased taxes on the backs of our most vulnerable constituents, our seniors. They're not seeing increases in Social Security, pensions, or other safety nets. While this economy rides on a precarious bubble that will break at any given moment, they will be subjected to significantly more stress. Additionally, I feel it's personally irresponsible to saddle two new members of this Board of Commissioners with this albatross, when the decision should be made by those representing we, the people, for the next four years. It is not an abdication of the responsibilities of the existing Commissioners to pass this on to the new board. Rather, it is a measure of transition that should be dealt with within the new year by a board that can conceivably oversee the process. I urge you all to pause and reflect on the implications of this decision before you make it. Please allow the new board in 2024 to consider this issue and act in the interest of our taxpayers. I also urge you as a board to delay any action on potential involvement with any developer or entity seeking funding for projects with tax monies of any source or obligated, without clear plans and impacts to county taxpayers. Too often of late, we are subject to a position of, "We have to pass the bill so you can see what's in it," mentality. That stance has brought untoward consequences to taxpayers at the federal and state level. It is imperative that the county taxpayers be given clear direction as to the scope and impact of development projects before precious tax dollars are committed, regardless of a loan or grant status. My opinion is this: If these developers are so anxious to locate here, let them expend their funds in the interest of anticipated profits. It is not good fiscal practice for government to bankroll development on the backs of individual taxpayers, especially in a perilous economy. In closing, I wish to thank our outgoing Commissioners Rick and Tony for your outgoing, excuse me, for your service and commitment to our county and our citizens. While we have often had spirited discussion and disagreement on some issues, it isn't lost on this taxpayer that you have incredibly challenging positions that you must take. I want to extend my best wishes for you going forward and look forward to working with our newly elected officials in the new year. Thank you.
Any other public comment at this time?
Mr. Chairman, there was a request about calling. Someone is trying to dial in. What is the number, Matt?
Five seven zero five six seven zero zero five.
Okay, any other public comment this time? We have someone who's joined us by phone.
Yes, Commissioner, this is Austin, sorry.
Morning, Austin. Anybody else?
Yes, Commissioner Jason York.
Morning, Jason. Okay, we'll move on to reports.
Commissioner?
Yes.
I'd like to request approval to add an item to the agenda that was not previously listed. And that is the collective bargaining agreement with the county detectives. And that'll be action item 6.7.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to amend the agenda to add the collective bargaining agreement between county detectives and Lycoming County.
Second motion.
All clear, say aye?
Aye.
Can we just note that there was a matter that came up less than 24 hours prior to the meeting and with the publishing of the agenda?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. My reason for amending the agenda is that a matter came up within the last 24 hours. It did not allow us to put it on the original agenda.
Partying and approved.
Right, parting and approved it last night.
Okay, so noted. And all clear, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, still carry. This is it, Mr. Chairman. Alan?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
First, I have presented for your ratification our invoices due through December 31st, 2023, to be paid on this November 20th, for $2,235,749.52. The breakdown is as follows, with 39.56% being funded by the General Fund at $884,556.24. 22.10% is being funded by other grants and pass-through monies at $494,118.32. 36.21% is being funded by RMS at $809,577.54. 2.12% is being funded by escrow at $47,497.42.
Okay, is there a motion? I'll move to approve.
A second.
Any comments or questions? Here you now, all clear, so.
Aye.
Aye, still carry.
And next, I have presented for your application our invoices, also due through December 31st, to be paid on December 27th, for $1,773,313.69. The breakdown is as follows, with 32.43% being funded by the General Fund at $575,011.24. 21.48% is being funded by other grants and pass-through monies at $380,945.68. 46.04% is being funded by RMS at $816,497.86. And 0.05% is being funded by escrow for $858.91.
Is there a motion? I'll move to approve.
A second.
Any comments or questions? Here you now, all clear, so.
Aye.
Aye, still carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to information items. Where's that Representative Joe Hamm and Jamie Flick, year-end updates?
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Thank you, Joyce. Good morning.
All right, so we both just come up. Our year-end report is Harrisburg MS, and we're fighting for you. Today, we're here to honor two men. Two men who have given so much to their community. Two men that I know will continue to serve. They may be walking away from being a county commissioner, but their service will continue, and they will continue to be involved in our community. And so, today, it is my great honor to recognize Commissioner Tony Musser and Commissioner Rick Maravito for all the work they've done here in Lycoming County, here in our communities. And, you know, it's not easy being an elected official. It's not easy serving. They put long hours in. It's not just one meeting a month or two meetings a month and sitting up here. There is a lot of work that goes into serving, and whether that's at your local township level, all the way up to your county commissioner level. They put significant amounts of time, and they sacrifice. Their families sacrifice because of the time that they spend doing the job that they're called to do. Tony and Rick are both public servants and two guys that, quite frankly, I have always looked up to. I will say that while I don't always agree with my good friend Rick Maravito, we always had respect for one another, and we had some fun along the way. I remember writing a letter to the editor. I was young and dumb, but wrote a letter to the editor calling Rick out for his Brooklyn politics. Now, if you know anything, Rick is not from Brooklyn. He's from Long Island. And in New York, when you call someone from the wrong area, that's kind of offensive to them. So, I like to have a little fun. Rick got me back. It was a debate, a Commissioner debate, prior to an election, and I was just in the audience. And Rick took a shot at me, and it was good. I smiled, and he knew I couldn't say anything because I was in the audience. He was on the stage with the other candidates. So, we've always had fun, and, you know, whether we agree or disagree, the bottom line is I know that his heart is in the right place. It was to serve, to help his neighbor. And so, I have a House citation for Commissioner Maravito. Representative Flick and I both have co-sponsored both of the citations. Rick lives in my district. Tony lives in Jamie's district, so in Harrisburg, the member who has the individual in their district does the citation. So, I'll read the citation for Rick, and then Jamie will do Tony's. Whereas the Honorable Richard Maravito, a former member of the House of Representatives of Pennsylvania, is being honored upon his retirement from the Lycoming County Board of Commissioners, concluding an exemplary career spanning more than 34 years. Whereas a graduate of North Shore High School, Cornell University, and the Boston College Law School, Mr. Maravito began his career as a law clerk for the United States District Judge Malcolm Muir in 1989, and he has owned and operated several businesses for more than 25 years. Elected to the House of Representatives of Pennsylvania for the 2009 term, he served the 83rd Legislative District until 2014. To his great credit, Mr. Maravito has served two consecutive terms as a member of the Lycoming County Board of Commissioners, and he is retiring from the position of Commissioner. During his tenure, the board partnered with local Chamber of Commerce, bringing several new businesses into the county, established the Lycoming County Partnership Health Center, and introduced a bundled bridge program to replace 14 local bridges. A member of the Fire Tree Place Board and the Lycoming County Conservation District, prison, election, and library system boards, Mr. Maravito is a past president and the founder of the Williamsport Landlord Association, a life member of the James V. Brown Library Board. Throughout his career, he's demonstrated remarkable knowledge, ability, and integrity in carrying out his many responsibilities, thus earning the respect and gratitude of all those who receive the benefit of his tireless devotion to duty. Now therefore, the House of Representatives of Commonwealth of Pennsylvania congratulates the Honorable Richard Maravito upon his well-deserved retirement, heartily recognizes his exemplary record of service in keeping with the highest ideals and traditions of this Commonwealth, and offers best wishes for a happy and fulfilling future, and directs that a copy of this citation sponsored by Representatives Joe Hamm and Jamie Flick be transmitted to the Honorable Richard Maravito.
It's a total surprise. I actually thought we were giving a report on Harrisburg. And as I was listening to Joe, and I was thinking that, you know, oftentimes, I'll say to my son, if we can't get along in our community, how do we expect the world to become a better place? The nations of the world? And as you were reading, and I was thinking about all of our things going on in the community, I thought, you know, it's like a marriage, right? You know, some of us may feel one way in the marriage about certain things, and others may feel another way. But at the end of the day, we want our family to be strong. We don't just walk away from our marriages. We don't ever let the level of discord get so high with our spouses. And somehow, we have to find a way, as neighbors, to be the same way. There's no question Joe and I disagree, but I don't doubt that Joe absolutely has his heart in bettering this community. And I mean that with all sincerity. And so, if we can find a way individually and collectively to try to bridge the gap and never let the discord become so painful with things that we wish we hadn't said, which sometimes we do in our marriages too, right? Then we're gonna, we're gonna have a better shot at making our community better. And the reality is, we all have something to contribute, right? We all have something to contribute. Joe's perspective. Joe, my neighbor absolutely adores you. You helped him out. You helped him out when he was in a crisis, and that means a lot to people, right? Because at the end of the day, you feel sometimes it's an impersonal world out there. So, thank you very much. It means the world to me, and whether I'm from Brooklyn or Long Island, I don't know. These days, I'm just from COVID station.
Got that Mary standing with me here. So, Rick, again, congratulations. I know that Joe wanted to flip a coin to see who got you and who got Tony to hand the citation up. So, Tony, I've known Tony for 30 years. I've known Rick for 20, 25 years. So, Tony and I are dear friends, and I'm not even through year one yet as a state representative. I was sworn in January 3rd. So, I was reflecting here at the end of the year on my campaign, and it's campaign season again. So, I thought, you know, what words can I say about Tony? So, I'd met with him maybe a year and a half ago, and I thought, you know, can I run? Can I run? Can I actually do this thing? And the thing about all three Commissioners is they're all optimists. And you think you have to be to have this job. You get beat up a lot. Joe and I get beat up a lot. Lots of hate, you know? You just have to not ignore it, but look at it, process it, and move on and be positive. And that's what Tony has always been to me. So, when I decided to run, I met with him, and he said, "I think you can win, Jamie. I really think you have a shot at this." I said, "Okay, what's step one?" I have no political background. Went to meet with Mary, and he goes, "You gotta get your name out there. You really do." So, he goes, "Go to the Lycoming County Republican Committee," which Mary is a member. So, I called him after that meeting. I said, "Well, Tony, they endorsed my opponent 88 to 3." And he says, "You got 3 votes?" And I said, "Yeah." He goes, "Yeah, that's good. You got 3 votes. Thanks for a third of those, Mary." That was like a head shaker. But then he said, "If you lost by 85, go knock on 86 doors." Exactly what he said to me. So, the next day, next couple days, I went out and knocked on 86 doors. He goes, "You gotta get your name out there. Go to Little League events, go to bingo events, go everywhere you could." So, I then set up an ice cream social at a nursing home in Loyal Sock, and I went and I got chocolate and vanilla, and I got my name tag on. And the first guy comes up with a walker, and he says, "Hey, I used to have your job." And I said, "Oh, you've served ice cream." And he says, "No, you idiot. I was a state rep." I said, "I have so much to learn." And that was Bob Wise, who was a state rep in 1969. Some of you know Bob Wise. The next gentleman that was in line was Tom Dempsey, who was a state rep right after that. So, one Democrat, one Republican, and this is what I got to taste. I said, "Could I get a picture with both of you?" And at the same time, they said, "No." So, I want to commend all three Commissioners for working together, always putting the party to the side and working for the people of Lycoming County. You've done, both of you, all three of you, an absolutely incredible job. I have no doubt that that will continue with Mark and Mark also. So, that's my little story. I did go on to be successful. And one of the last thoughts I have about Tony is I had applied for some Act 13 money years ago for a ball field, and not only does Tony, you know, work hard to get you that money, when I showed up at the ball field, the first guy there to work on the dugouts was Tony. So, these guys don't just, you know, process things, hand out money. They are there. I did have Rick throw out a first pitch once, and that was really a disaster, Rick.
Baseball's not my. There's always a lot of anxiety to throw the first pitch out of there.
So, I don't think anybody did your back and thrown that out. Our catcher was really upset with that thing. So, further citation. And again, as Joe said, it's not just you two gentlemen. It's your families and your wives, and what Mary and the Musser family has sacrificed, and Sarah and everybody is just unbelievable. So, thank them for it. So, further citation. Whereas the House of Representatives of Pennsylvania is always proud to acknowledge those individuals who, through professional excellence, bring great credit to themselves and this Commonwealth. And whereas Tony Musser is being honored upon his retirement from Lycoming County Board of Commissioners after a career spanning 36 years. And whereas a graduate of Williamsport Area Community College with a degree in business management, Mr. Musser has served as Vice President of ARM Services, Inc., since 1987, and he also owns a real estate company with his sons and has served on the Leadership Council of the NFIB. A member of the Lycoming County Board of Commissioners since 2012, he is retiring from the position of Vice Chair. During his tenure, Mr. Musser has assisted with the acquisition of more than 1,000 acres of property from the Federal Bureau of Prisons, the introduction of the bundled bridge program, the formation of a team of non-federal sponsors to address issues with Williamsport levy system, and the establishment of a Lycoming County Partnership Health Center. In addition, he has been active with several organizations, including the Southland Sport Lions Club, the Lycoming Emergency Planning Commission, the Seat Council of Governments, the Lycoming Clinton Joyder Board, and the Lycoming County Prison and Election Boards. Now therefore, the House of Representatives of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania congratulates Tony Musser and to me, along with Mary Musser and the entire family, upon their well-deserved retirement. Heartily recognizes his exemplary record of service in keeping with the highest ideals and traditions of the Commonwealth, and offers best wishes for a happy and fulfilling future, and directs that a copy of this citation sponsored by Representatives Jamie Flick and Joe Hamm be submitted to Tony Musser. Thank you.
You know, when you speak after Commissioner Maravito, you can't say a lot more. I just want to thank everyone here. What's really important as an elected official is you can't do it by yourself. It's impossible. You need community involvement. You need phone calls. You need constituents calling up and giving their point of view. You need past Commissioners, past reps. And what's really, really impressive, and I, you know, maybe it's happened in the past and maybe not, but I can tell you for sure, I've never seen so much community involvement in so many different issues, one. Two, I have never seen such a dedicated group of state reps, our state senators, and their staff to get the job done. Listen, if you looked at our budget, you're gonna see one-third is from the taxation of our properties. And then you're gonna see a third in the state and a third from the federal. Two-thirds of our budget comes from state and federal, and we better have good, I mean exceptional, state representation. And we better have good, I mean exceptional, state representation. And we certainly do. And I applaud you for the hard, dedicated work. You know, as commissioners, I'm very proud. I've been served with three boards of commissioners, all very dedicated to what they do. You know, they talk about the family. And I can, I can tell you a real quick story that last year, we're on, we're on the bay out there in Delaware. And I've just taken a call because I'm in a meeting. I said, hey, slow down the boat, man. I got, this is gonna be a 45-minute boat. I wasn't thinking about them. I was thinking, hey, I gotta be involved in this meeting. And here, it took us a little bit longer to get across the bay, you know? But that's the sacrifice that your families, you know, go through when you're an elected official. It is, it is, county government is just something that you love, you appreciate. Because not only do you work with your coworkers, your colleagues in other counties as well, you're working with some of the best staff to serve as constituents that you've ever seen. When you look at this agenda today, it's a long agenda, right? It didn't happen in 30 minutes, right? The people that are working for this county, and it's every department, every elected official, they work tirelessly to get this agenda made for us. It may have been, you know, we look at it, some instances, it may have been three weeks. Other instances, it may have been two years to come to fruition, to be on our desk to vote. And that didn't come just from us. That comes from the dedicated staff. So, you know, it was awesome. Participating with the colleges, what great partners they've been for Lycoming County. The nonprofits. We would never have been able to do the ARPA without our nonprofits helping us along the way. Just so many people to be thankful for and appreciative for. And my closing remark will be this. You know, I always believed in putting something up in front of you, you know, so that you'd never forget. And it stays there, so it keeps you grounded. And that's, that good effect of government can only be accomplished by citizens' participation. When our citizens refuse to vote, or they refuse to participate, or refuse to call, gather, protest, whatever, we're losing our democracy. Okay, we're losing our republic. Don't ever forget that. It's too precious. It's just too precious to let go. So I appreciate everyone here and all the employees, the state reps as well. Thanks.
So I want to add to this, as I've had the privilege of working with these two gentlemen. The accomplishments of, I want to do this while this room's full, before it empties out. Because I want to, I want the public to hear the accomplishments that these gentlemen were involved with. Shortly after 2000, we had COVID hit. We all know that. Three months in, and we were faced with many challenges. And we kept COVID on the bay. We kept things operational due to our leaders in this county. We kept things open and were able to function. Through that, we received CARES money. And we could have kept all the CARES money, but we decided not to do so. We gave $200 to each school district per student. That was $3 million went to the school districts. We helped 350 businesses. We helped 43 nonprofits. The Bridge Bundling Program, which is a program model across the state, which started in a previous administration with Mr. McKernan. He should be given credit on this, along with the two commissioners, and has continued into now. We've completed 17 bridges. When you're at a statewide conference and you're talking to a commissioner from Northumberland County and they hear about the Bridge Bundling Program, and they don't know how they're gonna replace a bridge down there, they said, hey, can you have your plane department call us? Because we need, we need some guidance. The funding for protective gear for county law enforcement, huge. Making sure our law enforcement had protective gear so that they'd go home to their families safe at night. We made sure that every county ADC had that protective gear. Funding for every fire department in Lycoming County, they suffered terribly through COVID. Suffered terribly. And we gave each one of them $20,000. Funding for MAMA and TAFCA, the training for the police, for the fire personnel. $290,000 went to their training, so they could continue their training. The funding that went between South Williamsport and Lowell Sock Township, and the partnership between those two municipalities. The funding for the four townships, the Northern Alliance for their fire EMS. Today, we're gonna be voting on funding for further training for fire personnel, having to do with lithium batteries and how to safely put those fires out. The same program, which has to do with rape victims, brought to us by the DA a few years ago. Making sure those nurses were trained properly in testimony in court and providing rape kits to those rape victims. And recently, we've expanded it to all sexual assault victims, including children. The sale of the land across the landfill, the farm. Digger Associates is over there now, brought 150 jobs. And we're in discussions with further businesses for further development over there. The ARPA funds, we made a decision to do generational impact. Over $7 million went to water and sewer projects. $4 million of that's gonna go to the levy system. We already had committed a million in the previous administrations. We've committed $5 million to the levy system. The housing initiative program that came out of the ARPA program. Our ARPA program was recognized by Senator Casey as one of the model programs to follow across the state when he came here to visit us. He says, we share this with the rest of the state on how to utilize your ARPA funds. The housing initiative program, $2 million last year, $2 million this year. We spoke with the developers. They need help getting the infrastructure to the sites. And we have one that was just approved for 50-some houses in the Lowell Sock Township. And then we have other ones on the agenda in the near future to bring in additional housing that's gonna increase the tax revenue in this county. The mall project, a loan to the mall for $5 million, hopefully for economic development in the future. As we see that transforming in the next few years, where that's gonna become to help our county. The levy system, as we continue to work on that. The purchase of the Coroner's Building. We purchased the building for $399,000. It's in the works of being done. The Coroner will have a home. The Sharwell move, we moved the Sharwell to the fourth floor of the Executive Plaza. That will save over half a million dollars a year. The sale of the Executive Plaza, this building right here, we sold for more than $1 million than what it was listed. The sale of the FOB property, which was in 20 years in the vacant, it's done. The sale of the land for the expansion of the transfer station, so that people don't have to sit on Third Street and have a traffic hazard. The sale of the land for the conversion at the White Deer Golf Course. So therefore, we can transform that over there and also bring additional housing. The settlement of the lead shake tank, which is a dozen years in its making, for $2.9 million to the county. None of this would have happened, none of it, without a team effort. The department heads, the elected officials, that were all involved in these decisions. And these two gentlemen right here, we got things done. And their hats should be tipped for what they've done, along with the leadership in this county and all the employees. They work, Commissioner Musser is absolutely right. You've gone by these buildings on weekends, the lights are on. Those employees come down here, they're dedicated, they work from home. They work at night, they work on weekends, because they care about constituents in this county. So they work extremely hard. All the credit's due, because none of this would have happened without a team effort. But it's been an honor to be a part of this and to work with these two gentlemen. We'll continue to work on the levy system with the new board. The small stream flooding initiative, clean up those small streams. And lastly, the commercial air service to this airport. We're not gonna rest until we get that commercial airline service into the airport. So those are future projects that we'll continue to work on with long for many. But again, thank you, gentlemen, and our team in the county.
You know, Mr. Chairman, you mentioned, Commissioner Musser mentioned projects that have extended beyond. We have two commissioners here from prior terms. Commissioner Ernie Larson, who must remember the sale of the FOP land. And we have Commissioner Jack McKernan, who remembers fondly the Bridge Bundling and the lead shake tank. We thank you both for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this.
I want to add a couple more things, and that is, Scott, you've been a tremendous leader. Very difficult time with COVID. I mean, some of the decisions that we had to make, that we had to make. And I'm looking at the sheriff back there every day. We had COVID meetings, and how are we gonna address a new issue? It was daily. And then trying to get guidance from the state and federal governments that just weren't open. You know, and even to this day, Eric, you're calling, you call for the IRS and nobody's answering the hung?
Yeah.
You know?
They hang up on you.
Young governments have to work, you know, municipalities, counties. We have to continue to work, and we can't get the help sometimes. But you've led us through probably one of the most difficult times in Lycoming County history, I would say. We didn't always agree. But we can say one thing for sure is we had to make decisions. And that's where it stood. And it would be remiss of any of us to forget about one of the most important, what I believe is a bedrock or the foundation of county government, for the most part, is the Director of Administration. I can't say enough. Lot of stress. We see it, you know? So thanks for your service.
And our Director, he's available, literally when I say 24/7, he's 24/7. I've seen him work on Christmas. Seen him work on New Years.
All the time.
All the time. He gets up in the morning, 5:00 AM, he's checking his emails. I found him on the phone 11 o'clock tonight. Back to COVID, I want to thank, there's two department heads here who, you know, they were very instrumental through COVID. Actually moved their departments. And that's Tom Eep and Dave Huppin. They moved it across the street to the old bank, so that transactions could get done for the local banks, the people that needed to sell their homes and make transactions. It was a difficult time for both those departments, and they worked through it. Without their assistance, those things will not happen. So thank you, gentlemen.
And I want to say it's been a pleasure working with both of you. We have sometimes butted heads, but that's part of the process. And it's like I said earlier, it's important to have that. That's why they need three commissioners. That's why the statute doesn't say there'll be one commissioner or two commissioners, but three commissioners. And Mr. McDermott, you do work tirelessly. And you are one of the hardest-working individuals I know. We've also sometimes disagreed. But I've tried to always be honest about everything. But you guys are both hard workers. You, Mr. McDermott, are an incredibly hard worker, not that they're incredibly hard workers either. No, but it has been, it has been a good time. And I hope that the new board coming in recognizes that you need to be on top of the stuff, because the staff, part of our job is to give the staff guidance and direction and to make sure, not micromanage, but to take the big picture. And sometimes some of the decisions we make, some constituents may not agree with, but we're trying to take the big picture of where we're going as a county. But it's been a great, a great time.
Okay, moving on, personal actions.
Morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
I have the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment pending successful completion of background check and other employment conditions. For the District Attorney's Office, Angela Lockbridge, a clerk three, full-time replacement, 1661 per hour, 75 hours per pay period starting January 2nd, 2024. District Attorney's Office, Matthew Hutchinson, clerk three, full-time replacement, 1661 per hour, 75 hours per pay, start date is January 2nd, 2024. The Pre-Release Center, David Fox, resident supervisor one, full-time replacement at 1810 per hour, 80 hours per pay period starting January 8th, 2024. Pre-Release Center, Shayla Wyland, resident supervisor one, full-time replacement, 1810 per hour, 80 hours per pay period, start date of January 7th, 2024. Pre-Release Center, Michelle Probst, resident supervisor one slash cook, full-time replacement, 1810 per hour, 80 hours per pay period, start date of January 8th, 2024. Prison, Sean Meskell, correction officer one, full-time replacement, $20 per hour, 80 hours per pay period, start date of January 8th, 2024. Prison, Tiffany Miller, correction officer one, full-time replacement, $20 per hour, 80 hours per pay period, start date of January 8th, 2024. Prison, Caitlin Mall, correction officer one, part-time replacement, $20 per hour, not to exceed 1,000 hours annually. Transfer date would be December 24, 2023. Budget and Finance, Emily Snyder, accountant one, full-time replacement, $49,237.50 per year, 75 hours per pay period, effective January 7th, 2024. The Courts, Caitlin Solomon, administrative specialist, full-time replacement, 1685 per hour, 75 hours per pay period, with a start date of January 2nd, 2024. Resource Management Services, Scott Young, transfer station driver, full-time replacement, 1998 per hour, 80 hours per pay period, start date January 15th, 2024.
Okay, have a motion.
I'll move it, please.
Got a second? Any questions or comments? Here in the long term, so.
Hi.
This time, we will recess Commissioners' public meetings for the word of assessments or revisions. Need a word of assessments or revisions at this time. Good morning, Brooke.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here seeking your approval for a refund for La Clark Boots USA. This refund is a result of a real estate appeal that was filed in 2022. We have settled, and the value was changed on the parcel due to a court order. The refund amount is $11,541.59.
That's county taxes only, right?
Yes, that is correct.
So just looking at the, at the document you gave us, because I kind of want the public to understand, they don't necessarily have the document. The old assessed value was $5,718,000, right?
That's correct.
They filed an appeal and they said, hey, we think we're paying too many taxes. And they went out and got.
They got appraisal done, and their appraisal came in at $6,485,000. The board denied it. They did not like it. So we went out and got an appraisal. Our appraisal came in at 7.5 million. But we have to apply the common level ratio to the 7.5 million, which brings it down to...
3.9.
3.9, yes, 3.9 million. Because we have to bring the value back down to the 2004 base year.
So even though the appraisal they had was higher than the assessed value that we had on record, and even though our appraisal was higher than their appraisal, when we went to court, the judge has to apply the common level ratio.
Yes, that is correct.
And so it takes it almost 50%.
Yes.
So we cut in half the value of the taxes that that company's gonna pay. And they're not doing anything illegal. They're perfectly entitled to this butthole. They get the common level ratio, and we, and the county taxpayers end up losing $11,541. The school taxes lost money, the township, everybody.
$11,000.
$11,000, yeah, $11,541. Now, was that $11,541 just for a certain time period, or it's not for the entire year?
That is for the 2023 year. And that is just the difference from the old assessed value to the new assessed value.
Okay.
Originally, with the $5.7 million, they were paying about $37,000. Since we are at $3.9 million now, next year, they will pay around $25,000. And that's just county taxes only. That's not including the township or district.
Right. So, and this is an example of how, in case after case, the lack of the reassessment contributes to a situation where the difference, that $11,000, has to be made up by other people. So that can actually, if you add enough of them up, can actually result in a necessity for a tax inquiry. for a tax inquiry, because you're going back to 2024. Okay, I just wanted to understand that.
Any comments, motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On your side?
Thank you.
Thanks, bro.
Thank you, bro. We adjourn the board of assessment traditions this time, and we'll begin the commission public meeting.
All right, moving on to action items, Commissioner, I would like to bring up action item 6.8, that's been readjusted to the, just to do that first. And that is seeking your approval on the allocation of funds to DeBois Town Fire Department in the amount of $8,900 under Act 1363.
Okay, got a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Bob here?
Paul here. Who's here represented?
Yes. Would you like to talk? Yes. Morning.
Kurt Waller, DeBois Town Fire Department. The funds that we're requesting money for is to bring instructors down from FDNY out of New York to teach the fire service in this county, and probably will be some out of this county, on how to deal with lithium ion batteries. It's a hot topic that's been anywhere, like, all over the US, it ranges anywhere from cellphone batteries up to cars. We're seeing it more and more, and how to deal with them safely, I know we've had a couple minor issues, luckily it's all they've been at the landfill, that have been dealing with it. The problem is, is it's new, not everybody knows how to deal with these en masse quantities. As far as finding any of our local instructors around here, they don't have the experience in this topic. A lot of all the information and where we're learning stuff is coming from New York, and unfortunately, where they've invested a lot of time and money has been due to burning down city blocks. They've had some of them, like the scooter and the bicycle shops, that are catching fire due to improper use or anything like that, and they've invested a lot of time and money throughout the last couple of years, that's where the knowledge is coming from. We'd like to bring that here to benefit the residents here, so hopefully we can stop stuff before it becomes a city block and all that. So, that's why we've requested the funds for this, sir.
Period. We had a little play on words, hot topics, they burn lots, quite hot.
Yes. Unfortunately, like, if you look at, like, if you look at cars just in general, typically your average fire trucker engine with 500 to 750 gallons, which they average run, can put out an average car fire fully involved. If you're talking a fully electric with the whole base of it being a lithium ion battery, you're looking at probably five to seven tankers of anywhere from 1,500 to 2,500 gallons of water. You will find that, like, with vehicles alone, California is in the process of passing one to where, when any electric vehicle out there catches fire, their tow companies actually have to put them in a dumpster and submerge them in water for a couple of days, because they've been notorious to rekindle not once, but two or three times. Because once you damage that battery until you can fully get it drained and cooled down, you don't, there's, the hazard is always there, and it could reignite with that.
And how many people in the audience knew that this was a major problem? You know? Yeah, so, so you have a handful that, that are aware of it, and here we have volunteer firemen and women that, that stay up. You know, they, they, they read about all the concerns and challenges, especially these lithium batteries. They bring it to our attention, and it's just a small price to pay to save lives.
And it's not just vehicles, it's a matter of is how many people bought their kids and grandkids the electric powered scooters and the bicycles, and they're being used in their homes and everything else. Once they get damaged or an improper charger or anything like that, and you overheat them, that's where a problem arises, and that's where your fire could come from, improper use, disposal. It can be something small that, that's the cause of why your house burned down or something else. So, it's not just.
And you're talking about blankets.
They've made, there's a blanket that you can use for electric vehicles, they're roughly about $300,000, or, yeah, $3,000, depending on what manufacturer, give or take a couple hundred bucks. That's one way that they're talking that you can put out electric vehicles, is you have to get this blanket safely over it, and basically you're going to smother it. The problem lies there, though, is the second you go to move that, you pull it onto a wrecker, it could rekindle. So, they can help stop the spread, but if we invest $3,000 in a blanket, they are only good for, one that we just purchased was, I think, 30 uses, barely, as long as there's no wear, additional wear and tear with that. But the problem is, is so we just spent $3,000 on a blanket, the wrecker company comes to take the car, do we give them our blanket to keep on that, and then we're out? Or what, where do we do? And that's what we're hoping to learn on other ways to make this so we don't have additional fires, or the car dealership doesn't burn a whole car lot down because of one bad apple or something. And there's charging stations popping up all over, people are putting them in their houses and plugging them in. It's hazards that we don't know. It's a newer, it's new, and we don't have the training, nor have the resources to bring, unfortunately, due to the cost with it, because we can't just use local level instructors, because actually, I have a couple of the local level instructors that teach a lot of other classes that are very experienced, that would like to take this class, because they don't know, besides videos, YouTube, other training, like articles that you write. There's been nobody here locally that's brought this information down.
Mr. Yorke's is on the phone. How do we dispose of these batteries, or if you know, Mr. Waller? What, what should constituents do who have a damaged electric bike, and what you're suggesting is that once it's been damaged, it's compromised?
As far as where we're putting them here locally in the county, I do not know that. That would be something where you'd have to reach out to a battery manufacturer or distributor and see if they can take them, but some of them will not take them if they're damaged or leaking. I don't know if Mr. Yorke has something set up at the landfill, or fortunately, everybody else, they throw it in their household garbage.
Is he on?
Yeah, he's on the line.
If I may, commissioners, unfortunately, there is right now no home for a vehicle battery. We do have a vehicle battery at a local dealership, waiting to try to find a home, and the car manufacturer wouldn't even take their own battery back. But I, I had a conversation with one of the battalion chiefs of the city fire department a couple weeks ago, because he called, reached out to me and asked if I have a location. We do not. As far as the small ones, as I mentioned, we are working on a place in New Jersey, Greenship is a company we're working with, and we're going to be pushing out information to the public on how to prep the small batteries by, you know, like using tape or some way of covering the leads of the battery. But when it comes to, like, vehicles, there is right now no known outlet for this area that I can come up with. It is a huge concern, and I do appreciate your support for this class. I've already asked to enroll in that class, some of the staff here at the landfill as well, because it is a serious issue that we're facing.
We should ask our, our federal elected officials to require by statute that the companies take the batteries back, and not simply place the burden on, on local government to, we'll end up having to dispose of them.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? Kurt, I want to thank you for bringing this to us.
Thank you.
Very important topic, and a serious issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On your side?
Aye. Kurt, you don't have to stick around. It's going to be a long.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to, or back to 6.1, to 6.2. Eric?
I ask that the board commissioners adopt Resolution 2023-27, the 2024 budget.
Okay, got a motion to approve the adoption of 2024 budget?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
Any comments or questions?
Can you give us and the public some highlights of the budget in terms of where our fund balance is and?
Sure. The county is pretty big. If you count all the funds, we're going to be spending $172 million in 2024, and bringing in $123 million for all funds. The difference would be made up for the savings that we've had in, in fund balance. The general fund budget is $88 million in expenditures and $65.7 million in revenues. That again is made up in current fund balances. We're looking at ending fund balance for the general fund, which of $15.4 million, that does meet the GFIWA Government Finance Officer's Association recommended amount of two months of budget expenditure, so we can operate without any revenue coming in for two months. There are no tax increases, there is a short-term borrowing potentially of $2 million if needed. Wages are increased at 3%, and we're looking at $15 million in spending of the ARPA money. We also got the $3.4 million in revenue for Executive Plaza this year, and we got $2.9 million for the RMS leach tank settlement this year as well. The big item is the capital investment. The county is investing a lot of money in buildings that need to be done. It's probably been delayed for some time, and they're putting quite a bit, $26 million of, in total with RMS, into public capital items. That's substantial and beneficial to the county as a whole for a long term.
And one of my concerns was, you can't do everything at one time, and we have a lot of projects in 2024.
Right.
We have to put some of those off to 2025, obviously.
Right.
And so, we have some big ticket items, and we have the HV, he says, he says the next door courthouse, and, you know, that's anywhere from $46 million to $46 million. Those are some of the big items that we're facing.
Right.
You might have to, you might have to take out a short-term loan on that. Again, you don't complete your, your cash in a business to take care of a big ticket item that's going to be with you for over 20, 20-plus years. What's our Act 13 balance currently?
We're over $24 million.
$24 million.
Eric, are the golf course grant numbers in here?
They are. They created a specific fund for the golf course, and that's included.
I want to tell you, I think you've done a great job in terms of the format. This document is on the.
Computer.
On the website.
On the website. Yeah.
So, it's actually a really easy to read document with things like, you know, table of contents and just.
It has some background that.
Background.
And, wasn't.
But I really think you did an excellent job. I mean, obviously, every, every board, I mean, every prior budget office has done a great job. You took it in another direction in terms of making it really customer-friendly, for customers, meaning our constituents, and I think that that's something you should feel really good about, because reading these in the past is sometimes difficult.
I would agree with that.
I think what you also have to, the public has to be aware of is that it's, the revenue comes in, and gets posted in the year which we receive. So, we had $11 million coming in 2022 for ARPA, $11 million coming in for 2023, that's $22 million. Okay, that doesn't count as revenue for 2024 in our budget. So, that $22 million will show up as a deficit. They won't, you know, balance each other out, because we, we received that money in prior years. So, now we just have to spend it.
Right.
And, and hopefully, you know, that, that, everything is done accordingly, and, and, you know, trying to get guidance from the, the state and federal government on this money, it's, it's a nightmare. It isn't, and they keep changing, and they still change. They just changed something else two weeks ago.
Yeah.
How do we deal with that? You know, because if we don't do it right, we have to send it back. And if we don't spend it, and we have to send it back, well, we hope that all these projects are, are going to come to fruition, so.
And Citi cog and the plane department has been very instrumental in making sure we're up to date on those changes.
Okay. Yeah, and so, as, as the chairman mentioned, and we talked about this at the last meeting, we may go out, as you mentioned, I guess, for a short-term loan, $2 million, that we can then, down the road, when the bond market becomes better, we can convert some of these long-term capital improvement costs into a bond, which would be a decision for the next board. But it's, it's not a great time to be issuing a bond now.
Arguing to pay it off.
Right.
Any other comments or questions? Here in the long term, aye?
Aye.
Aye. So, your mic here.
Okay, next item is Resolution 2023-28, a five-year capital plan for adoption.
Yeah, a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On your side?
Aye.
Ayes.
Next item is Resolution 2023-29, real estate tax assessment set for 100%. Motion? No change.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On your side?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, Resolution 2023-30, retaining the current real estate tax rate of 6.5 mils.
Motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On your side?
Aye.
I want to thank everybody who worked on the budget, department heads, everybody, the officials, to make sure that we kept the line and we can have to increase taxes, and it's due to the leadership and the hard efforts of everybody.
And.
To you as well.
Thank you.
Okay, 6.3.
All right, Commissioner, seeking your approval to proceed with a county-wide reassessment.
Okay, got a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Questions or discussion?
I believe ever since in 2012, when I came into office, and that's one of the first things I got involved in, at the state level, with assessment taxation board, it's complicated on how, how a reassessment works. I wish I could tell you how everything's going to turn out. I cannot. It's, it's, it's not possible. But why can I assure you is that every time, and I, and I have, I printed it out, I saw it this morning, but went back in the 70s, 80s, 90s, and 2004, each, each time we saw the values change dramatically, okay? It wasn't like, and I'm talking on a county level, and then it breaks it down into the municipality level, but not neighborhood level, okay? And, and the values went up a lot, as far as the property value, okay? And then they do their magic, and as far as their neighborhoods, they do their magic as far as the municipalities, and trust me, this is why we do reassessment, okay? It's because it's about local governments, you know? Unfortunately, we are, we, we are a commonwealth, we have, how many municipalities, 25, 2700, somewhere around there?
2,500.
2,500 municipalities, and they each have a governing body. And then you tack on the 502 school districts, right, that can tax, and the 67 counties. And it's just. And it's just a cycle. It's the only way, well, for the most part, that government can operate, by property taxes. We've approached the state many, many times. We need a better solution and we can't. We just can't put our heads together and find the right solution. And there's reasons for that. I mean, listen, if you want to go to a 2% sales tax, guess what? People in the bordering communities like Philadelphia, well, they might lose business. They'll go do working and they'll go purchase their stuff in Delaware, okay? I mean, so there's a lot of different issues when you're talking about property taxes, okay? Our job as commissioners is try to level that playing field. Make sure everybody's house is valued at the correct value. Why? And you can absolutely ask any question.
I need to.
Yeah, absolutely.
I've got to say, before you do anything with this vote, I think it's patently unfair for the board, who two members are going to retire, to put this over to the brand-new commission that's coming in. And we're going to be stuck with reassessment that is not going to be properly digested. Now let me explain something here, please. Because what's going on is everybody out here...
Do you want to go to the podium?
Sure. I'll be happy to do that.
You've got to come to the podium.
Now it's your name. Rick Hauser of Oilstock Township. Now, gentlemen, everybody out here is dealing with Bidenflation. Everything's up between 10 and 50%. I don't care what you buy or where you go. And I just heard it said from the administration here in the last week, "Well, we'll just get used to the higher prices now because inflation's slowing down." It's a big cost. And everybody out here, nobody's bills are going down. I don't care what side of the political aisle anybody's on, your bills are up. Now we're going to look at a reassessment. Guess what everybody else has to do? We've got to tighten the belt up. We can't reassess our job. We can't reassess what business we have and say, "Well, I need another 20 or 30% more money. I'll just vote it in." We can't do that. This is a real hardship, gentlemen. I'm going to say to you seriously, with this reassessment situation, this needs to be voted down today. This needs to be pushed over to next year because this is the kind of rope-a-dope that people don't like. Okay, two of you guys are off the board. And I don't know what you're going to do, Scott, but the bottom line is this smells like it's coming up for a vote and it's going to pass. So we're going to have a reassessment. And we look at this stuff and then, okay, so we're chasing the ball downhill again. And I'm just saying, the whole situation here is we can't grow the money the way government can. Not that you have printing presses, but a reassessment's going to come in here. And I don't think anybody's going to say that the price of your house is going to drop. It's not going to drop. It's going to go on up. And so then will the cost of keeping your own property. I know people that pay more for escrow and taxes than they did when they mortgaged their house right now. And that continues. With the older population, it just gets worse. I'm just saying to you, it's time for fiscal responsibility and frugality. It's time to tighten up. A lot of people in here have to do the work or $1 has to do the work at 2, 3, or 10. We don't grow money like this. I'm going to ask you a question. Go ahead. You heard earlier from Brooke Wright. Here's a company that is saving $11,000. I'm going to get my glasses on because this is a big number. $1,541.59, all right? They're saving, we're refunding them $11,000, and you know why we're doing it? Because they know they can go and appeal their taxes and get that. Now, let me ask you. And here's my issue, okay? This is, to me, is not about taxation. It's about leveling the playing field. And this is not leveled. Because their value is now 50% less than what it should be, and we're going to allow that to happen? No, because there's not one government that's going to hold the line on that and cut employees, cut services. They're not going to do it, okay? So we better make sure that these people are paying their fair share. Do I like this? No. Why? Because I'm going to pay more in taxes. I know I am. I should be. My values are higher than what they're supposed to be. I mean, not supposed to be. They're higher than what they're being assessed at.
Right.
But we cannot continue for the last 12 years to allow this inequity to happen so that they pass it on to each and every household. You have to understand that that's what we're doing. We're trying to stop this inequity.
Okay, and the inequity is...
So from Mr. Hauser, can I just take that and multiply it by five years? Every year, they're going to get $11 million reduction. After five years, or $11,000. They're going to get almost $60,000 after five years.
This is business, right?
But it's not just that. Because here's what is bothersome. We get a whole lot of money. We get a whole lot of services in county government for their money, for the money that we pay. I'm just because I'm inside. And I think anybody, any one of our constituents can sit here and say, "When you pick up the phone and you call the county, somebody's there to answer the phone and get an answer to you." I think everybody can say that. We have a lot of responsibilities within this county government that we're closest to the people. Comes to school districts, county, and municipalities. You know what? Think about your school districts. Think about how the administrators, that, too many administrators, too much. Why are we sending our children go play football an hour and a half, two hours away? That costs a lot of money in gas. It costs a lot of money. Let's educate, let's put our focus back on what it's supposed to be and not the waste.
We're getting off of this.
No, no, no. That's taxation.
But you're talking about schools now. If we want to open head up and talk about unions, then you want to talk about where your money's going down a rabbit hole with the schools. That's another story. On top of this.
Absolutely.
But let me just say this.
Exactly.
Okay, great. But you're talking about businesses. Why is it they always end up, that this is always the reason why we have to do this? Well, these businesses are getting away with it. Why are they getting away with it? Why do they get such a deal? Why are we extending deals to people like this where we're going to do the same thing in a few years and say, "Well, hell, they were estimated so low or they didn't pay or this or that. We got to do another reassessment." And it just feeds on itself. It's the law.
Mr. Chairman, can I just address a couple of points?
Yeah.
So the businesses are not doing anything illegal.
I didn't say they were. Somebody's not assessing them properly to start with or we would run into this.
Well, no. The problem is we can't do a spot assessment. We cannot just go and say, "We're going to do a spot assessment on your business." It has to be everybody or nobody. So there are two different issues here. Tax increases and reassessment are as different as apples and oranges. Our ability, no, they really are. Our ability...
What do you want to do a reassessment for, Rick? You want more money.
No, no, we don't.
That's exactly what it comes to.
No, no, Mr. Hauser.
I was just told these guys are too low. What's the idea for doing the reassessment?
No, Mr. Hauser, it's about equity. When Mr. Muster points out that they're going to not pay $11,500, look over five years. We went through it at the last meeting that multiple businesses have come in. I calculated that in five years, they're going to cut half a million dollars out of our revenue, out of county revenue. The same thing with the school districts. Now, even if we try to scrimp and save, it's very difficult to try to not spend revenue when the price of oil goes up, when everything goes up. Even if we're level-spended here, we're not raising taxes, right? So there are two different issues, but it's really about an issue of equity. Personally, the two of us are going to pay more taxes. I'm going to pay more taxes. I own real estate. Okay, but it's the right thing to do. If people's, after reassessment, if the value of your home goes up, the millage comes down. And it can only be a difference of, is it 10%, Brooke, or 5%?
10%.
10%. But we still have a responsibility as elected officials to not spend money. So it doesn't absolve us from that, right? The millage comes down. You understand that, right?
All right. Well, what I would say is, no matter which way, the habit of government and all these situations never begets a lower bill. That's all I'm going to say. And in the end, we're going to end up paying more, everybody.
Thank you for your comments.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I just want to address one comment about the concern that both Tom and Mr. Hauser had about this board dealing with it. You know, Commissioner Muster sat on a statewide reassessment board for multiple years.
12.
12 years with C. County around the state. There's no one in the county who has more understanding of reassessments than him. I have studied reassessment, I said as Commissioner Metzger. You know, we're required. The one course commissioners are required to take has to do with reassessments. A new board coming in has to take a course in reassessment. I don't believe that it's, I think it's actually irresponsible of us if we leave office when we know there's a serious problem, if we don't deal with it, notwithstanding that both of us are going to pay. Do you know how many people have said to me, "Don't do reassessment because I'm going to pay more taxes"? I mean, people who have a lot of money. That begets the person who has very, very little money. Because when a clerk comes in legally and gets its value reduced, and last week it was calls or last month it was calls, and Brooke can give you the whole list of them. Collectively, when they come in and get their reduction, which they're allowed to do, someone else has to pay the freight, even to keep us level funded, to keep the prison going, to keep the 911 center going. We need a certain amount of money to do those things. So even when we work our darndest and employees work their darndest, you come in and over five years, they cut half a million dollars out of the budget. What do we do? Just because they got their assessment. So they're two different, apples and oranges. Reassessment taxes. We always as elected officials have a responsibility to keep taxes down.
You were in the middle of your comments. Do you have anything else you want to add?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
I think this is probably one of the most important things about the reassessment. Is that I have a property here and my assessed value is $70,000. We do the reassessment and it's now a value of $200,000, okay? Now, that doesn't mean that I'm going to get taxed on $200,000 as it is today. And that's pretty important to understand, okay? Because this house went up $130,000. This house went up $50,000, okay? I've got two properties. Doesn't, I don't even care where they're at, okay? I'm not even going after the neighborhoods in this particular case. But what happens? The values of all our properties are going to increase dramatically. That's what happens in a reassessment, okay? It could go as high as 500 million to a billion. I don't know, but we will get a real value. Now here's where it makes a big difference. Is that this house here that was assessed at $200,000 and this house here that was assessed at $50,000, I mean, $130,000 more and this one at $50,000 more, the millage is going to drop. But because the assessed value of all the properties in Lycoming County, right, is high, when a school district or municipality or a county has to raise its tax, right? It doesn't have to raise it a mil. It may only have to raise it 0.2 mils or 0.1 mil. So what does that mean? This guy here is going to pay more than this guy here. And that's what we talk about fairness. If I left a house go in downtown, well, in a community or a neighborhood in Williamsport, and they're all about the same values, right? These people are going to make out. They're, because the taxation won't be a mil. It will be 0.1 mil because the values have increased overall. And that's where the fairness comes in. Not so much that you're going to get double your taxes, and I don't know. I don't know where I might be, okay? I'm assuming that if I, as I look through the history of tax, not taxation, reassessment, okay? We find out that yes, it is a third, a third, and a third. And I showed, I think, did I give you that information this morning? Okay, you see areas, Jersey Shore was a good example, was a great example, where they actually received revenue after the reassessment. And they had to go to court to try to make up the revenue. It happens. That's what a reassessment does. And hopefully, that doesn't happen, you know, too much. But you see it. You see a lot of red in those papers where it worked in reverse. And I'm not sure if I'd want my, you know, I look at it this way. I'm an investor. And if my value goes up, guess what happens? My equity goes up and guess what happens? I can leverage my equity, right? I can leverage my equity. I can get more out of my house. I can ask for more money from the bank. And I'm not, you know, I'm at the age where I don't know what I want to do. But I'm just saying, there's advantages and there are disadvantages to it. So this is in our budget. A budget has the right to be opened again. If you want to call it a smokescreen, whatever you want to, I certainly want, I have advocated a reassessment ever since I walked in this office. Okay, because I know it needs to be done and it should be done every four to five years, always, always. And then it's a lot less expensive to do. But to say that I'm, no, that's not correct. You can go back on the records and you can, everybody knows that I'm a firm believer in a reassessment. And then if they want to change it in January, so be it. I'm going to feel like I did what I was supposed to do.
Mr. Chairman, any last? Okay, so, one second. Here's where I'm at with this. I said it a couple weeks ago. Timing is everything, everything in life. I hear the arguments for reassessment. I brief a lot of the arguments. But I can't see a reassessment this time due to the economy. People are hurting so bad right now. Interest rates are out of control. Inflation really hasn't come down that much. Pennsylvania is number 50 out of 50 for groceries, highest groceries across the country. Go to the grocery store, buy some groceries. You know, the men that let the women do shopping, say your sweetheart, "I'm going to go do the grocery shopping this week." Give me the list. You'll be astonished what you walk out and how little you have in that bag for what you paid. Colorado and Pennsylvania is the two highest. I've talked to the seniors. And I'm not saying it's going to affect the seniors, but I've talked to seniors who are concerned about it. Since COVID, the houses are overinflated. I'm worried about the crash coming back down, lowering them again, the price of the homes. I don't look for our economy to get any better next year. I think it's going to be worse. And I think in an upscale economy, an economy that shows promise, this needs to be visited at that time. I understand it's three years out. We all know, I had a news reporter say, "Well, how do you know what it's going to be like in three years?" We don't. But I don't see how it's going to be much worse. It could be, but I don't see how much it could be much worse. I kind of, I lived in the 70s as a teenager. I saw what it did to the housing market as my dad was a builder. I remember sitting in line at the gas pumps for two hours because the gas stores sitting there in a station wagon, wondering where we're going to be gassed before the pump ran out. We're not too far away from that. We really aren't. Interest rates were a lot worse back then, no doubt about it. But they're not coming down. Things aren't good right now. I sat down with my two colleagues last week and I said, "I put out, we table this until next year and let the new commissioners and myself go around to the public, go to the eastern end of the county, the western end of the county, take Brooke with us, educate the public about the need for it, get more education out there so that when it does eventually happen, it's going to eventually happen at some point, that the public will be much more educated on it and could accept it at that point." I left that with my colleagues. They can decide what they want to today. That was my solution. If they decide to vote in favor of it today, that's their choice. They're elected official. But at this point, I cannot be in favor of it due to what's going on in our own county. You know, I talked to a state legislator last week, former state legislator last week about this. It was actually his suggestion about doing this education throughout the community. He says, "I know families over here where I live that couldn't even buy their kids Christmas trees." You know, he says, "Couldn't even get Christmas presents." Pulled out of the parking lot here last Wednesday. What in the world's going on with the street? There was a line from almost all the way down to, it was on Court Street. It was almost all the way down, it was almost halfway down to Ford Street. And I thought, well, maybe there was an accident or something. Came back from lunch and the line was just as long. I left at the end of the day, it was just as long. It was the Salvation Army. People were in need. They were going there to get stuff for Christmas. That line never shrank for, I bet you, half a day. People are hurting. There's people going to food banks right now in this county that you would never have an idea that are going to food banks. Your neighbors. They're your neighbors. They're hurting. So a good conscience, as much as we need this right now, I can't vote in favor of it because of the economy.
I want you to, I want you to just reflect on what you said, as much as we need this right now.
As much as we need it, but not right now.
And I'm going to tell you, Scott, I'm going to just tell you, because this is a debate. This is about transparency.
Right.
Now, you make no action, right? Is that going to stop the people from raising the taxes, the taxing bodies from raising taxes next year?
Let me add to this.
No, please, tell, ask the question. Will, will the school districts raise taxes? And instead of raising the taxes one mil, they're going to raise them 0.2 mil. You know, don't confuse this, as Commissioner Maravito says, this is about the value of the parcels and this is about being taxed fairly. And this is about that $11,000 that we're not going to gain in some other, no, not some other, every other household will be paying for this.
We all are.
We all are, whether we do this assessment or not.
This is not going to stop Leclerc or anybody else from coming in and doing an appeal again.
No, no, no. Well, I want to finish my statement. I want to finish my statement. The problem is deeper than a reassessment. It's much deeper. We could do a reassessment tomorrow or next year or the year after, okay? Those levels, that, that millage is going to drop. But guess what happens? It goes right back up because of the body who's responsible, whether it's a school district, whether it's a county, whether it's the municipality, has to stop the spending, has to stop the wasteful spending. And until they stop that, it's never going to, it's never going to change. So it's responsibility of those elected officials in those roles that even when they have reassessment, it does happen someday, whether it's now or next year, the year after, they have to look at it and say, "Listen, we have to live within our budget. We can't just pass it on to the taxpayer again and then pass it on again next year because that's what's going to happen. The spending has to stop."
So during this whole couple of years, especially with COVID and the workforce, right? Have we not increased our workforce costs?
We had to for attention.
And did we make significant cuts in employment over the last three years? Some we planned with the department heads and some we didn't plan just because of COVID, right? But we still increased our cost. And how do you pay for that? How do you, how do we pay for diesel that was at one time $2.25 and now we're paying $5 a gallon over there? How do you pay for that? You have to raise costs. You have to raise. I mean, I've operated a business for 37 years and trust me, I charge more today than I do 37 years ago. Why? My labor went up, insurance was, everything goes up. And it's just being responsible or cutting what you need to cut. Now, I can agree, there are some places that need to cut more, okay? But it's inevitable, costs go up, you know? And now you got to find ways of creating revenue. We don't want to do the taxation. We don't want to do, I don't want to pass a one mil increase, not at the county. We've done what we could do and we're very conservative.
Well, reassessment's not going to fix spending problems.
So if I can just address a couple of points, the, I think it's really important for us to look at this over five years because the example of Leclerc and the example of Coles and who else came to us, those reductions, when there is no reassessment, those reductions repeat themselves year after year after year. And before you know it, after five years, even though you're trying to cut spending, your revenue has gone down a huge amount, a huge amount. I think one of the reasons people are hurting is because there is not a fair taxation system in this county. When, when companies can come in and get a reduction, but the little old lady who's a widow, who's living on a fixed income, still, as Commissioner Massera says, has to pay a millage increase in taxes, that is a huge bite out of her budget. And so part of the reason our families are struggling is because the tax system is out of whack. When the, when the common level ratio is 0.52 and next year it's going to be 0.48, it means that a company coming in is going to get over a 50% reduction in their assessed value, just off the bat, just off the bat. Because by statute, they have, we have to give them the common level ratio. I'm not sure everyone understands that. We have to reduce what their assessed value is. The typical homeowner cannot afford to get an appraisal done and come in and seek the reduction. But as I experienced when we sat on the board, there are law firms that just do, I'm not attacking the law firms, it's, it's a business. They go in and they go around, all to every county in the state and they say, "Listen, your common level ratio, Mr. Maravito, the common level ratio in your community is 0.48. I can go in and file some papers. You get an assessment done. I can get your reduction in your property taxes. Why don't you take it?" So it's really, part of the reason we didn't act sooner is because when the common level ratio was at 0.75, I did not believe it was prudent to spend the amount of money it was going to take to get the reassessment done, to have it turn around and probably within the first year drop from one down to 0.9. That's typically what happens. It's now at the point where we're almost on life support. At 0.48 next year, we're on life support. It's our responsibility to spend the money. It's going to take three years to get that reassessment done, right? Brooke, is that correct?
Thirty months.
Thirty, thirty months, two and a half years.
Commissioner, when we had last reassessment, that one, 2012, previous one, Brooke, I'm sure the common level ratio was, I think, down to 0.28, 2.6, I think it was. That would be life support.
What was it at the last one, 2014?
No, it was before that.
2004, it was 16.9%.
0.69.
I think it was back in 88 when it was down.
You're talking back in the 80s.
I think it was, you had to put on this, it was 0.2 something.
Right. But the only difference is back then, the state had a different. Yeah, the state had, the State Tax Equalization Board had a different mechanism for calculating the common level ratio. So in any, whether it's life support, to me, it's pretty serious when, when you can come in. And again, we have to look over a five-year period to truly understand the impact of that reduced taxes. So it isn't something that we're doing just, you know, willy-nilly or at the last minute. It's something that needs to be done.
But again, we said 7 million was the value of that property. They came in at 6.7 million.
Right.
The assessed value was 5 million.
Right.
And they appealed their taxes and got it for less than what they were paying originally.
Right.
This is a gain.
Right.
You know, and if you don't, if you don't like it, it's the law. If you don't like it, well, then join them. And I can tell you go a billiard. You have a right to billiards taxes.
I'm well aware of that.
Okay.
But I will say this. If it's been so long since we've had this reassessment, it's not going to make any too much difference if it kicks into the new year, gentlemen.
No, you're right.
Without any vote today.
No, the difference is this, Mr. Hauser. You're bringing in two new commissioners who have to understand 26 different departments in the county, 11 elected officials, 550 full-time employees, 60 or so part-time employees, security needs that the sheriff has, security needs that the court system has, how to make a prison work, how to keep from getting sued, and, you know, there's a lot of things they need to do.
They can also figure out how to do assessments when they, when the time comes.
They will take.
They can do that, too.
Absolutely. They will take the course, but the question is, time is a ticking. If it's going to take us two and a half years, it's going to be well into the end of their term.
Okay, Mr. Dunn, you had something you wanted to add?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, if you come up to them, we'll, we'll finish with you.
Jim Dunn, Armstrong Township. I'll be brief. I didn't come here for this, but since I'm here, I'll add to it. I'd like to thank the commissioners for taking on the reassessment. Now, my properties have gone up. I have a couple of properties and they've gone up several times in the past few years. You know, no one likes to pay it. And as Scott said, you know, we all feel it. And it's true. But I think it takes tremendous courage for this board to finally do this. I've been in local government for 18 years and this has been on the agenda the entire time and no one has taken the courage to do it. And what it plays out, it doesn't necessarily play out as this big tax increase, like the numbers are a little confusing. What it does is it creates, it eliminates a lot of inequity. And as a local government official for 18 years, we've fought several different tax inequity. We have similar properties with three different assessments that vary by millions of dollars, millions of dollars. And what that does is that impacts local government's ability to do the things it needs to do, your roads, your bridges, your administrative government tasks. And the same thing for the school. They have to spend thousands and thousands of dollars in professional services fees to try and justify these inequities. And it isn't necessarily to target the people with the inappropriate assessments, it's to make it fair for the other people who are paying maybe a disproportionate amount. It equals out, it takes several years for this to occur. And if this board is willing to do this, it takes the burden off the next board of commissioners to govern in an appropriate way without the stress of the reelection tax reassessment. And, and, and you may think that that's not important, but it's very important for them to be able to govern effectively and have a burden removed from them. It's a lot of courage. As I see this, you know, and now that I'm saying it, too, we'll all take quite a bit of grief from quite a bit, quite a few people for speaking in favor of it. But quite honestly, and I didn't come here for this, it is a long time coming and the window of opportunity, the window of time before this actually is effective on people, you know, you have to, you have to be optimistic. You have to believe that things will be better then. And I'd like to thank the board for putting on here and enduring and, and taking the courage to remove the burden from the next board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who loses their right of appeal on reassessment? Anybody?
They automatically, if the board denies it, right, so it comes, it comes before the board's assessment review. We deny it, they automatically have a right to go to court. And then it's decided by a judge. Now, a lot of times.
So the same people who are being cited as appealing their tax to getting it lowered, they'll still be able to do that next go around, the reassessment, they can still do the same thing.
But the difference is they won't get the common level ratio, 0.48. They will, they won't get it because by law, the common level ratio, once the reassessment is done, becomes one. After a certain amount of time, it fluctuates. The stat, State Tax Equalization Board looks at our fair market values, the data goes in, and the numbers get crunching. At a certain point, if it's 0.9, they're weighing the cost of an appraisal and the cost of an attorney against what they're actually going to benefit in a tax reduction. Brooke's office often negotiates, once the board refuses to grant it, right, denies it, they go to court. Between the time going to court, her office will sometimes negotiate a settlement. But I sincerely think that the number of people, number of companies is going to go down. Because if the board denies it, now they're facing not just the legal fee of coming before the board with a lawyer, they have to file in court. And it becomes a cost benefit ratio. How much are we really going to save?
Well, the bottom line is, is that the cost of doing this, every time I go into any sort of reassessment arrangement like this, it's always the same citations are used. There's businesses that have been not paying enough, so we got to do the reassessment. It's the same thing over and over again. And the public at large and the people that pay the freight in the town mostly are the ones that bleed out on the road for this stuff. And I'm just telling you, that's the way this is going to end up. And it's no problem if we waited so long to do this reassessment that it makes no difference if it happens this next year.
Okay, thank you for your comments. All right, so we have a motion on the floor, vote approve of a county-wide reassessment. Do you have a second? All in favor, say aye.
I'll roll call.
Roll call? Roll call, Commissioner Massera?
Yes.
Commissioner Maravito?
Yes.
Merry Christmas, fellas. Commissioner Metzger?
Nay.
Carry two to one. Okay, next.
All right. 6.4. Commissioner, seeking your approval on the agreement with Arc Terrace Impact Investors. This is a 2024 budgeted item and it is pending final legal review.
Okay, a motion. I'll move to the second.
I'll second.
Okay, comments. Another topic we've discussed the last several meetings. And we've continued to have meetings with the Arc Terrace and the city, Home Partners, Chamber, and First Community Foundation. We have representatives today from the audience. We've had them speak in the past regarding Arc Terrace and moving ahead. So they have motion and a second. Any comments from my two colleagues?
So again, you know, I think it's important for us not to look at this as, this is the end of the year, Maravito, Massera leaving and they're voting on it. Government is a continuous.
Please, thank you.
Government is a continuous process of trying to, quite frankly, deal with problems and build a community that people want to come to. That's what I see my job as an elected official as, you know? One of the things that I've tried to learn in life is that life always presents you with problems. And the question is, are we equipping our children to deal with them? Are we equipped to deal with them? The biggest problem we face in this community right now is depopulation. It's the lost population. And we may have debates about whether we're losing population. You might get on the I-80 and say, "My gosh, there's more cars on here than there were 10 years ago." But research after research, whether it's the Center for Rural PA, which Senator Yaw chairs, or whether it's the other entities that have looked into it, rural America is losing population. And with the loss of population, the tax burden falls on a smaller number of people, which is one of the reasons people are also struggling. Because when the tax burden falls on a smaller number of people, there's a smaller number of parcels. We've done, and Commissioner Metzger read off, a number of things we've done to try to stimulate the development of housing through various programs to bring infrastructure, water and sewer to the communities to build houses. The Chamber brought us the proposal as a result of some of their members, Brent Fish and others, who have been actively involved in noticing that the people who are buying property seem to be leaving. They seem to be going to Union County. So our job is to try to figure out, how can we attract capital investment? We know that Amazon and companies like that will go to the urban areas. They go to suburban areas. Rural America is starved for capital investment. And as much as we try locally, investors such as Mr. Massera and Mr. Metzger, myself and people in this audience, as much as we try to reinvest profit money we made, it's hard to aggregate large sums of money for capital investment at one time. For all we say about the ARPA, it injected $22 million into the county, $25 million into the city, that we put to good use fixing water and sewer lines in Jersey Shore that were, how old? 110 years old, right?
108 years old.
108 years old, to the point where when the hospital needed water and West Pharmaceutical needed water, somebody had to turn off their taps. That's a ridiculous way for us to expect this community to grow. So our job, and looking at our terrace, the First Community Foundation brought this to us. And they brought and they said, "Look, if the Chamber puts in 1.25 and the Foundation puts in 1.25 million and the county puts in 1.25 million and the city puts in and the county puts in 1.25 million, and the city puts in 1.25 million, this investment group will put in 20 million. So that's 25 million of capital investment. That's as much more money than we got through ARPA. Now, we have vetted it, the three of us have vetted it. We have gone around to these qualified opportunity zones, which only exist in Williamsport. And by the way, this is President Trump's Tax Bill 2017. This is not some liberal, or whatever, I shouldn't even use that word. It's not some of whom are in the audience don't favor the other person. This is a legislation put together by the man that many people in the community love.
We love him.
So the point is that it's a tax opportunity for people to invest. We started nine months ago examining this problem. Some will say, well, why are you doing it at the last minute? It's not the last minute. It's been nine months of vetting, of driving around the community, of looking at where the investments could go, of numerous phone calls where we said, we do not want an abortion clinic built in this community with this money. We do not want low-income housing built in this community with this money. And the investors have said, we hear you, we're not going to do those things, right? Now, do we know exactly, exactly what they're going to do? No. And the reason we don't know, now listen, just listen, I see some in the audience shaking their heads, is because they need to actually do a tremendous amount of research. But to move ahead and do that research, we know what they are going to do. They are going to invest in a profit-making, property-tax-paying, private entity business that is hopefully going to create jobs and create economic activity in the community. And we hope that putting 25 million into that is going to create a synergy with other investors, some of whom are local investors and some of whom are out-of-town investors coming and saying, hey, we're going to invest in this community. But I can tell you one thing guaranteed, by the way, this is Act 13 money, so it's money we got from the gas drilling. I can tell you one thing. If we don't do something to jumpstart our community, if we don't fight to bring people here, if we don't fight to increase the population, we're going to die. And I'll tell you, I am not a person who sits around and watches things die because we want our kids to be here and we want our families to stay here. So we're asking for your support today and to understand that if we want to claw out of this depopulation that's gone on, we saw from 120,000 people to 114, we're projected to go to 112,000. This is a good move. And it's a good move because it involves many parts of the community. It involves our private sector, our grant-making foundation, our businesses in the Chamber. And unless I'm wrong on this, I see Mr. Fink in the audience. The Chamber voted in a secret, the Chamber board voted to send it to the executive committee 20 to four?
Roughly about that.
Roughly 20 to four in a secret ballot vote. That shows there's tremendous support among the business community.
You go ahead. All right, so what I wish was here was a good, solid document, okay? We placed restrictions on there that did not make it into that document yet, such as they cannot take advantage of a Keystone Opportunity Zone tax. Or they can't, even if they're within a LURDA, you know what LURDAs are, they cannot take advantage of that. We are not going to let them take advantage of that. If that were to happen, it's off. It's period. It's off. There's, we put some restrictions on there that's, listen, they'll do their due diligence. And if they can't find a way to make that 15-plus percent return or higher, they're not doing it. This is typically brick-and-mortar stuff that happens. And that's how we build revenue without increasing taxes. Pretty simple economics, pretty simple management. If we can invest 1.25 million as a county and bring in 25 million in brick-and-mortar, which we will probably project our return on investment within six years, right? Well, we'd be a fool. We'd be a fool. He'd vote us out of office for not bringing in taxes. That's just that simple. Without having to raise taxes or bringing in revenue and opportunities. It's, to me, it's a no-brainer. And as long as those restrictions are within that document, and it'll be up to you, you know, when they come in through the attorneys, the new commissioners, you'd be foolish not to. Especially in Williamsport, it's the only area, as Commissioner Maravito said, there's three federal opportunity zones, they're all within Williamsport. And Williamsport is our county seat. You're seeing, it's a difficult time for Williamsport. Just look at, nobody ran for mayor other than the mayor. What's that telling you? You know? Who wants these positions? They're difficult. And so our job as leaders is to do what we need to do. And a pretty easy decision for me.
Well, it was a lot more difficult decision for me because, you know, when you proceed to give somebody 1.25 million dollars, you don't know what they're going to do with it. I think you have to have a brain in your head, first of all, make that decision. So as I've researched this, and I've been on, I've been in the meetings, I went on a ride around the community, I've been open-minded to this. And I go back and forth, go back and forth. But I've realized that my two colleagues have really pushed for this. And they're very much in favor of it, more so than I am, because we don't know the unknown. A couple of different things have been letting over the past two weeks. We had a gentleman here a couple of weeks ago, retired state trooper, who spoke to a trooper friend of his up in the Erie area. And he spoke very favorably about what's going on in Erie. He says it's been nothing but positive. So that was very encouraging. However, each area is different. So as I met with, I think we had two meetings, Jen, since we had our last public meeting with ARC Terrace, what can we do to put restrictions on them? How can we make this work for everybody? So the restrictions are no low-income housing. That'll be written in the document. They want to bring market-rate housing, we welcome that. That's not low-income. Our two main areas are housing and childcare. We emphasize to them, we really need childcare help in this area. So, you know, explore that. The other thing is, they have to own, they have to own the entity, whatever they have, whatever they build, they have to own it for 10 years before they can sell it. That's part of the restrictions. That's part of their setup for ARC Terrace. Well, I don't want to wait for 10 years to see something pop up. So we talked, and we got it down to three years. Five? I thought it was three.
I thought the document said five, but maybe you're-
I prefer three.
I'm not sure what your document said, but-
Well, there's a little confusion here. First of all, the 10 years has nothing to do with how long it's going to take them to start something.
Exactly.
Okay, but it's typically within three years.
Yeah, so that's what I prefer to have, is done within three years. And if we don't see something in three years, then, and then that, that would be it. The other thing is, I'm here to protect the county's tax dollars. This is actually tax dollars, it's Act 13 monies. But I'm here to protect that money, and I wanted to know where we were going to be as lien holders. And so we're going to be the second, second in line. I had to play poker with the Chamber. I wanted to be first, but the Chamber won one bend, and they stayed first. And I can understand their point of view, so we agreed to be second. The city agreed to be third, and First Community Foundation agreed to be fourth. So I think we put safeguards in there to protect our monies. And at the same time, we're going to have a committee with volunteers that will sit on that committee, two from each entity, have buy-in on what would be recommended for the communities, which is important, to hear from those individuals for each one of those four entities that have that buy-in, and then bring it back to the respective boards. So I think by us putting the safeguards in place, it's much more favorable at this point. And then the report we heard from Erie, which was very good. So that'd be my comments at this time. Is there any public comment? Any public comment on it? Yes, yeah.
I just wanted to know, is this Arcticus? Are they going to have anything to do with the Lycoming Mall that's sitting vacant down there?
No, no.
Do we know the name of that entity?
That's Farmvest. Fanvest, Fanvest. Let me see, Farm, Fanvest.
So we're not aware of what they're going to be putting in down there yet?
They're still in the works of doing certain things regarding the infrastructure. And they're working with different developers on leases. They couldn't do anything until they actually owned it. But there's a lot of issues with the infrastructure, with the water, the sewer, the roads down there that they're currently working on and getting that taken care of. And in the meantime, they're in talks with different developers on leases.
And the name Arcticus, when I read that in an email, it just reminded me of an extinct name of a dinosaur. I didn't know whether that was someone's real last name or made up.
It's actually the ARC Impact Program WL LLC. And I think ARC Terrace is probably a shortened version of that. It's the name of the company that invests the funds, that creates the tax fund. So this money has to be spent in accordance with federal law, right? Because it's a federal tax opportunity zone. So they can't just, like the concern that had been expressed before about an abortion clinic or a casino or whatever, they can't just spend it any way they want. There's restrictions in the federal statute as to how they can invest this money.
So it's not going to have anything to do with DEI?
Diversity Equity Inclusion? They do attempt to do social impact, which is when they pass the federal law, President Trump and the folks who wrote the law wanted to impact socially positive things, right? That's what they wanted. They wanted a social positive investment for people who were looking for a tax break.
So this was under President Trump?
Correct.
Who was doing good for the country. It's not under Joe Baugh.
Yeah, although I would try to stress that every, every part of government builds on what people did before. Whether it's county commissioners standing on the shoulders of the people 20 years ago who had the foresight to put in the Riverwalk, or 50 years ago who had the foresight to put in the landfill. And President Trump, President Biden, President Obama all stood on the shoulders of other people who tried to make the country a better place. One thing about all these things that we're doing, Fanvest, the reassessment, this, when our elected state representatives, two of whom are here today, Representatives Hammond and Representative Flick, and when Senator Yaw is in Harrisburg, and they're fighting for money for this community, when they can point to the positive things that are being done locally, buy us to try to pull ourselves up, it makes it a hell of a lot easier for them to fight for RCAP.
That's a great point.
For H2O money, for all of the grants that are dished out at the state level. And when we don't take these actions, we make them go in with their hands tied behind their back because some other county commissioners are taking forward-looking action. And their state reps and senators are able to say, hey, our community's doing this. Senator Yaw has brought a tremendous amount of money back to this community in RCAP grants. President Flick and Hammond, the H2O money that just came back. We need to help them. We need to give them the tools.
Ma'am, as we did the agreement with the Fanvest, we protected the money, made sure we were the first lien holder on the bank. We made sure that it was a loan. We made sure that the land's going to come to us if something happens. We own that land. Same thing with here, we're making sure safeguards are put in place to protect the money the best we can. But we have to do things to kickstart the economy in our area and because it's gone downhill drastically. We've seen the mall, we've seen the stores move out, we've seen businesses move out. And these are two ways that we can bring that back. We have, at the same time, not just give it to them, but put the safeguards in there so that if something does go south, at least we're protected. All right, motion? Roll call, Commissioner Mazzar?
Yes.
Commissioner Maravito?
Yes.
Commissioner Metzger, yes. Okay. Moving forward, 6.5, 6.4. We're going to move to approve. All right, I hope so.
Commissioner seeking your approval on the reappointment of the following individuals to Lycoming County Water and Shore Advisory Board. John Gramlin, effective 1/1/2024 through 12/31/2028, five-year term. James Carpenter, effective 1/1/2024 through 12/31/2028, first five-year term.
Motion to approve these two gentlemen?
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we want to thank them for stepping forward to serve on this very important board that's in town here.
All right, action item 6.6, this is the one that we added. Seeking your approval on the agreement between the county and the Lycoming County Detective FOP Bargaining Unit for a term of 1 January 2022 through 12/31/2025.
Can I make a suggestion? Instead of changing all the numbers, could we make this like 6.5, please?
I'll make that motion.
Why are you? I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right, no, that's my-
Yeah, I got it under.
Okay, he's got it.
So we got to change every number.
That's okay, thank you.
You guys know.
Okay, motions?
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So here you go. And I want to thank the director, Mr. Wiley, for working on the agreement, and the county detectives for their work. It's very necessary and dangerous work, and we thank them for what they do on a daily basis.
All right, moving on to now 6.7. Commissioner seeking your approval on the agreement with Shawn S. O'Brien II, MD. This is an expert medical witness for the DA. This is an amount not to exceed $50,000. It's a 2024 budgeted item.
Motion?
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
6.8, we already did that one. So 6.9, Commissioner seeking your approval on the agreement with Guy Center Clinic in the amount not to exceed $25,000. This is again for expert medical witness for the DA. And it is a 2024 budgeted item.
Motion?
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So I hear my hearing.
Commissioner seeking your approval on the agreement with Sean McLaughlin, MD. He's the prison's medical director in the amount of $6,725 a month. This is a 2024 budgeted item.
Motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
All right, 6.11, Commissioner seeking your approval on the allocation of funds to Penn College of Technology and the community arts center in the amount of $25,000. This is an Act 13 grant.
Motion?
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Quick comment there, we want to thank Penn College for, and I know Commissioner Massaro, you've been a strong advocate, and we've all striven to support it because having the community arts center downtown really comes a place to go for people. So our thanks to Penn College for that.
6.12, seeking your approval on the emergency resolution 23-31 for the purchase of chemicals from Croft Lane Field Technologies Inc. This for flubber treatment in the leachate wells. I know that sounds a little weird, but it's actually an algae biological issue, and it requires some serious chemicals to take care of. An amount of $18,762.
Any motion?
I'll move to approve.
Jason, any comments on that?
Commissioner, it's just like Director said, biological growth that we're seeing in some of our wells and our pumps. And this is the major topic that most landfills are having discussions with. This is why this all doesn't come out. So we appreciate the emergency resolution because we got to get the chemicals in, clean the pumps out, and try to get a handle on them. I guess we call it the black goo or the flubber. There's really no technical other terms for it around the landfills, but thank you very much.
Okay, on your side?
Aye. Aye.
All right, Commissioner seeking your approval to reject all bids received for pulling place EDA renovations.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve. Yeah, a second.
What'd you say? Motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Director, Forrest, any comments?
Not, not really, just we're proceeding on the advice of our architect. We want to take another stab at it, see if we can get some different bids. Some of the figures in the bids were, we didn't think made sense because there were some changes that were made during the bidding process to some of the designs. And when we do it again, there may be some additional facilities included because we've already started looking at others.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner seeking your approval.
Hey, I'll say, on your side?
Aye.
Aye. Carry. Okay, thank you.
6.14, seeking your approval on the amendment to the agreement with Rogers Uniform. This is a 2024 budget item.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
On your side?
Aye.
So carry.
6.15, seeking your approval for the amendment to the agreement with Tammy Eichner. And this is a 2024 budget item.
Motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
On your side?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairman, I want to acknowledge the former Commissioner Ralph with us today also. Appreciate it.
Thank you for joining us. Good to see you.
I didn't even see him. Thank you.
He was hiding back there.
Yeah. Being educated.
All right, 6.16, Commissioner seeking your approval on the amendment to agreement with ATC Group Services doing business as BCM Engineers in the amount of $34,584. This is a 2024 budget item.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
On your side?
Aye.
6.17, Ralph.
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm here seeking your approval for an amendment to the tax claims solicitor contract. The price changes for partners is going from $125 to $150 per hour. And it's going for associates, $100 to $135 per hour. And $75 per hour for paralegals.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve. I, I, we were, I was going to give our solicitors a.
Oh.
A slight.
Well, it needs a second, right?
We appreciate.
I'll second it.
Yeah, we appreciate the work that they do.
I thought you were going to say the fair and reasonable.
Right.
It was, it is.
It is.
Thank you.
Well, we got a vote on it.
You guys just voted for reassessment. You want to make sure they're around.
You got to ask for a vote on it.
A motion?
I made a motion.
Okay, second.
I seconded it.
On your side?
Aye.
Aye.
6.18 and 19, Beth, you on line?
I am. Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
Good morning. The first item is a revenue item with Horizon. It is a whole lease that one of our tower sites. This is a, it's a tax for five years, 2023 to 2028. And it's a $500 yearly burden using one of our pedals. It will renew after five years, every five years with a 10% interest.
Okay, it's a 2024 budget item?
It is a 2024 budget item.
Motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
On your side?
Aye.
And my next item on the agenda is our agreement with Sullivan County. This is going to be for their annual dispatch that we do for them. And for 2024, the rate increases to $102,790. This is for the next three years. It will renew every three years at the amount of 3%. And they will pay that quarterly. This is a 2024 budget item.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
On your side?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
6.20 and 21, Alexa?
Morning.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Afternoon, now.
Yeah. So I have two items today. The first is, Action Item 620, is to approve the acceptance of the 2024 DEP Cap Coordinator and Cap Implementation Grant Award in the amount of $205,466. Acceptance of this grant will be crucial for continuing the county's clean water goals to reduce nutrient sediment pollution in our local waterways. Funding for the implementation part of this grant will be allocated towards two-stream restoration projects and will also help expand the Cover Crop Initiative Program in partnership with our Lycoming County Conservation District.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
Any comments? On your side?
Aye.
Aye.
The second one is Action Item 6.21, the Miranda of Understanding for the Five County Regional Solid Waste Plan Update between Columbia, Lycoming, Montory Union, and Snyder County. This joint regional solid waste plan update between the five counties assures waste capacity is available in the region for at least the next 10 years and ensures the county stays compliant with EPA DEP Solid Waste Regulations. This understanding for, on the agenda today, outlines the agreement for the five counties to participate and also cost share in the plan update. The other four counties have signed the agreement, and grant funding has already been secured to handle the additional cost.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
On your side?
Aye.
Thank you.
6.22 through 6.28, Willie?
Good afternoon. Seeking your approval for the Subrecipient Monitoring Agreement with YWCA, North Central PA, an amount of $100,000 for the 2023 Fair Funds.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
On your side?
Aye.
6.23, seeking your approval for the Subrecipient Monitoring Agreement with Gray Lycoming Habitat for Humanity through their home preservation project in the amount of $25,000, also 2023 Fair Funds.
Motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
On your side?
Aye. 6.24, seeking your approval for the Subrecipient Monitoring Agreement with Gray Lycoming Habitat for Humanity, the Scott Street Project in the amount of $25,000, 2023 Fair Funds.
Motion?
Move to approve.
A second.
On your side?
Aye. 6.25, seeking your approval for the Subrecipient Monitoring Agreement with Lycoming Clayton, join their board, in the amount of $52,000 through the 2023 Fair Funds.
Motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
On your side?
Aye.
Aye.
6.26, seeking your approval for the Subrecipient Monitoring Agreement with American Rescue Workers in the amount of $100,000 through the 2023 Fair Funds.
I'll move to approve.
A second.
On your side?
Aye.
Aye.
6.27, seeking your approval of the Subrecipient Monitoring Agreement, the Stepping, the Master Leasing Program, in the amount of $200,000 through the 2023 Fair Funds.
Motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
On your side?
Aye.
6.28, seeking your approval for the Subrecipient Monitoring Agreement with Stepping Supportive Housing in the amount of $200,000 through 2023 Fair Funds.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
On your side?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thanks, Willie.
Willie, they are all, the 2023 Fair Funds, all of us, we just recently approved. Thank you. Thanks for your hard work.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask for a personal privilege here. I have two, three members of my family here who just showed up, and I want to thank them. I think they're here because it's my last day. My wife just stepped out, my son, Rocco, and my sister from, not from Brooklyn, New York, from Manhattan, New York.
We hear so much about you, by the way.
Yeah.
Is that right?
We thought you, he's making up a sister.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thought I was making a sister. My wife stepped out, and honestly, they weren't here before when the representatives gave the citation. But I, I couldn't do what I do without their support. I mean, that goes to say with all of us, all of us, whether it's the Commissioners or the Director when, you know, you're, as you described, Commissioner Masser, taking a call on the vote. But I just wanted to say thank you to them, and I'm sorry my wife stepped down.
And Rocco, remind them of that, okay?
To the parking meter.
Oh, she went to the parking meter. Those parking meters, they would get you every time. I thought she was leaving, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Max.
6.29 and 30, Jason?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, for your approval, this is amendment to the agreement of WSP USA Corporation, the amount of $11,325. Commissioners, this is the annual flyover that we have to do every year. It gives us our elevations and the amount of airspace we still have used or have used. And we have to submit that in our report every year to DEP.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
On your side?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioners, the next one is through the repair of our Cleveland Stone Crusher. We need some parts from Rock. Equipment in the amount of $12,527.30. This just comes out of our maintenance repair budget that we have set aside for our equipment.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
On your side?
Aye.
Quick comment, I see, Mr. York, this is the last of your items. I'd be remiss if I didn't say these funds have come out of the revenue of the landfill, correct?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for your support. Much appreciated.
Yeah, the public should know that. All these big numbers, especially early on when we passed the 2.1 million and the other, it was, both of them had over 800,000 coming out of RMS, so.
And Jason, be reassured that after the first year, we have taped Commissioner Miravino stating that for future meetings.
Excellent. Much appreciated.
Okay, 6.31, Commissioner seeking your approval for the agreement with Delta Development in the amount of $100,000. Actually, this is not to exceed $100,000 for 2024 as a budget item. And this is for our consulting services with, and the planning.
So can you reword that again? This is not an agenda word properly? Not exceed.
Right. With Delta Development, not exceed $100,000. This is a 2024 budget item.
And the agreement as it's written is, and then as needed based on, right?
Correct.
Right.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
On your side?
Aye.
Aye.
6.32, Commissioner seeking your approval to appoint and reappoint the following individuals. Appoint Jeffrey Strowman, following individuals to the Lycoming County Planning Commission. Appoint Jeffrey Strowman, effective 1/1/2024 to 12/31/27.
Can we stop there?
Yep.
Motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
And I'll stand. Mr. Strowman had made a contribution towards my campaign. So I'll stand. So let's carry two of them.
But you didn't ask for the vote yet. We just, I made the motion, he seconded.
Second, on your side?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll stand.
Okay.
So let's carry two of them. Okay, next one?
All right, for reappointment to the Lycoming County Planning Commission, Joseph Reigart, effective 1/1/2024 to 12/31/27.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
On your side?
Aye.
And again, I'm going to reiterate Commissioner Miravido and Metzger's comments that we truly appreciate the volunteers that sit on these boards and especially ones that are as effective as the ones we're appointing here. Thank God they have a lot of expert knowledge in the fields, and they've helped us tremendously along the way. So thanks for asking to be put on the board again and be reappointed and continue to serve us. Thanks.
It's a lot of hours, and I want to thank both, yeah, both gentlemen for stepping up Joe again and Jeff for coming aboard, and they do a great job playing, playing commission.
All volunteers.
Yep.
All volunteers.
All right, 6.33, got a couple more volunteers. Seeking your approval on the appointment and reappointment of the following individuals to the Lycoming County Planning Hearing Board. Appointment of Howard Frye as an alternate, effective 1/1/2024 to 12/31/2026. And the reappointment of Leslie Whitehill, effective 1/1/2024 to 12/31/2028.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
On your side?
Aye.
Again, we want to thank both of them for their service.
I don't see Austin unless you're on the line.
I'm on the line.
Okay. 6.34?
Yeah. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Change order here for you. With the amendment stream to the agreement for bridge bundling program with BAC Engineering, the change order would increase the amount by $74,366.35, bringing the total contract with BAC to $910,794.35. Over the last year, there were some items that came up that required additional effort beyond what was reasonably expected. Right-of-way acquisition one, and the largest one being the TRC shop inspections, which is a PennDOT mandated third-party inspector for concrete beams and other structures coming out of shops. That's put in place to ensure that the products we receive on site are quality and constructed to the proper amount. We received approval to have these funded entirely through the liquid fuel allocation. And even with this change order, we did the math that BAC Engineering would still be $350,000 lower than the next lowest proposal that we received for bridge bundling.
Okay, motion?
I'll move to approve.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll second that. It's very difficult when you're trying to bundle 18 plus two bridges. And you never know what's going to happen. I mean, look at what happened out there in Loyola, for example. They couldn't get it underneath the lines, and so they had to come up with another engineering way of getting that cantilevered over that road without causing any damage. So I mean, there's, there's a lot that goes into it, so I have, I have no issue with this.
Yeah, I, like, as I echoed your comments, there also seven, you know, the bridges, we're dealing with different companies, PP&amp;L. PP&amp;L has a charge to move a pole and a time period to move a pole. And that can throw off the whole, the whole matrix. So this works out to be about 8.1% over the budgeted amount, the amount that he bid on. But he's still, as, as Mr. Daley said, he's 350,000 below what the next lowest bidder was. So I want to thank them for that. And it's great, Mr. Daley, that you guys were able to get it approved by PennDOT to use the liquid fuels.
Yeah, yeah. We were, we were fortunate enough to be able to do that on the previous change order. And we were able to do so again here. I will say, all 17 bridges are in the ground. The final one will be opened up by the end of next week. And it will be paved in the spring when weather permits, but will be available for use in the interim. So all said, the 17 bridges for bridge bundling will be done here pretty much next week.
Plus the two extra ones we got, right?
Correct, yes.
The state, the big, the big bridges that we got the money from the state for, so.
Correct, yep.
So here's, here's my question, in my last day here. I called you guys up and I asked you about the potholes in the new pavement on East Third Street from PennDOT. Allowing those, that company to put in the manhole covers and they're two to three inches below. and they're two to three inches below the surface. I mean, my vehicles are hitting them all the time. And why is our state government allowing this to happen? It's something that should be inspected. So I see in my state prep over here, no better person to get on the horn and say, hey, have them put in some extenders, please. Thank you.
Okay. All right, lastly, a motion, second. All fair side.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And last, Leslie gets the last action item of 2023.
Speak slowly, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Good afternoon, Matt. Seeking your approval for an hourly agreement with a networking company for the 2004 to 2006 year. This is in the 2024 budget. It is an hourly rate of two hundred and five dollars, and it's an as-needed basis. So we won't use them unless we need them.
Okay, motion.
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
All fair side, aye?
Aye.
And I have a comment here. So I was going through, clearing out my office, and I came across the letter signed by the IT department employees. I think I mentioned this to you, Commissioner Metzger.
Yeah. Pretty cool.
It isn't often that we have ten or fifteen employees in the department send a letter to the commissioners that they all sign saying that you, Ms. Patrick and Mark, were doing a great job.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I don't know whether you saw it, I don't know whether you put them up to it. I'm joking.
Two, three months ago?
Yeah, two, three months ago. It's never happened, and it's a testament to the two of you, and something that we haven't done before, where we have co-directors of a department working together, and you guys are doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
You should know that.
They sent us letters just saying how, you know, you guys are doing a fantastic job leading the department. And every single one in the department signed it.
Yeah.
It was really neat to see.
Well, thank you. It was them. They made the department go round and round if it wasn't for the team, and yeah.
But let me tell you, I've been to many departments, and from the treasures, the maintenance, to, and the employees have high acclaim for their elected officials as well as their department.
Absolutely.
So you're not alone, but written, you know, with all the signatures, that was unique.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Happy New Year. Okay, Commissioner Collins.
I know, it won't be long. You know, with the reassessment, I had five people call me to talk about the reassessment and tell me how it could put a strain on it, in which we certainly understand, you know, the uncertainty of what's gonna happen. We get that, okay? Because nobody can sit there and tell you exactly how much or how less you're gonna pay. But we've advertised this. We've mentioned it in several public meetings. And I only had five calls. When we had our bout with the library, I had four hundred and fifty calls, right? So what's important to some people aren't important to others. And what we think is really, really important, they don't care, right? I mean, it's just the way it is. And it's that snapshot in time, and that's what we're elected to do. We're elected to make tough decisions, okay? I'd like to say thank you, Commissioner Metzger. Very solid person. Things will go well in the future, I'm sure. Be always optimistic, and always think of us, you know, when you're making a decision. Your prayers have calmed me, seriously. They're tremendous. You put a lot of effort into them. And I think we make better decisions under the guidance of God and your leader that recognizes that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Maravito, I mean, we've had our shared battles, I mean, you know, which is okay. But I can tell you that serving with you has been an honor, that you're a man of high integrity, that you are a great family man, loves your family, loves your son, your wife, your sister, obviously.
You better mention her. She's the little child.
We're glad to see she exists.
But when.
Was anyone from Brooklyn?
Right. But when you talk about really taking every effort to make every meeting that you can, you have been there. You look, we don't always agree, but your arguments have always been intense. And when I say arguments for or against something, well-thought-out, and I just think it's a better form of compliment that if we all agree, something isn't gonna be right, or spending will get out of control, and ideas will be missed and opportunities missed. So I want to thank you for your service. Again, it was awesome. I want to thank my wife, my kids. Lot of sacrifices. I love you guys. Here's the reason I did it. So, and to the future boards, good luck. Stay optimistic and work hard and get things done.
Well, Commissioner, I want to, first, I want to thank you too, and agree that the prayers that you have given have always been on point in terms of helping us to remember, whether it's veterans or whether it's people in the community. And you, I think, may miss Commissioner Maser and I sitting at either ends of the table, which we began during COVID, and just our repartee, I guess is the word, our back-and-forth ban meeting. But hopefully, in an effort to try to get to a better understanding of an idea, a better understanding of an issue. And likewise, Commissioner, I, you know, you've always had a passion, and you've got the real-life experience to bring into government, which is extremely important. I mean, you both do. And Commissioner Metzger, I have enjoyed the fact that you've had thirty-two years here, and you've been able to give us a reflection on some of the things that have happened in the past, whether it's in the areas of benefits or whatever. But likewise, I've enjoyed very much serving with both of you, and as I did with Mr. McKernan, who I see has had to leave. But Commissioner Maser, I'm sure I will see you.
Sure.
And, you know, we had a long road together. I think about how years ago, when I was running for state rep, and we had some of the same conversations that you had with, that Jamie, you and Jamie had. And I've known your kids longer than I've known you and Mary. I've known Anthony, and John I didn't know as long, but Anthony was, oh God, he was so young. When I first met him. Where have the years gone? But, and Mr. McDermott, you're a hard, hard worker. You are a hard, hard worker. And as Commissioner Metzger said, you're there twenty-four seven, you know? And quite frankly, it gives us the ability to know that the ship is being handled when we're away. I really, I want to thank our solicitors. You know, I see David, J. David Smith in the audience. And, you know, it was interesting, when we first came on, he was one of the first people I spoke to after being sworn in. And we rely on solicitors. We rely on solicitors to give us the legal perspective on decisions we're making. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're gonna agree with them, but they're gonna tell us the consequences. And I think it's important for the commissioners coming in to recognize. And I see Mr. Wiley here too. Both of them have been, and Chris, with the retirement board, all of them have been available all times of day and night to answer questions for us. And it's important for commissioners to come in to understand their legal implications to what we do. And so you don't necessarily want to just shoot from the hip. You want to understand what is the consequence of what we're having. You still may make a decision, but at least you're knowing ahead of time. I want to thank the people of the county for giving me the privilege to represent. Being an elected official, you have to love learning, because if you really want to do the job properly, you need to learn. What did I know about running a prison before I came here? Not that I'm an expert on running a prison now, but I know a hell of a lot more than I did eight years ago. And you also have to like learning, and you have to like people. I think Commissioner Maser's comments earlier, you know, getting people engaged and putting them into motion is really important for elected officials to do, because if, and putting them into motion may be that they're saying things you don't agree with, but it's important to get their involvement. And it's true, we've had, whether it's the library issue or the recounting the ballot issue, we've had people in the community in motion, and that means that they're engaged in their government. The reason it's so important is because when people, when information is kept from the public, the public doesn't have to take responsibility for the decisions that are made. Or the flip side of that is when elected officials are transparent and keep the public informed about what's going on, the public has to take responsibility for decisions that are made. Because if you're not happy with a decision, then vote them out of office, right? So the worst thing you can do as an elected official is to say, oh geez, we don't want the public to know about this. We want the public to know, and we want the public to take accountability and to take responsibility. And if that means voting us out, you know, that's a consequence. But there's so many people in this room. I'm looking at Mr. George, Ken George, who all of us have relied on to keep these buildings running, you know, and tirelessly works to try to save money for the taxpayers behind the scenes. Our elected officials, the proponent, Tom Heap, who also had, what, twenty-five years here as an employee, had Mr. McDermott's job for a while, right? Now he's an elected official, the sheriff. The sheriff who.
Drives you nuts.
No. Sometime, we had one disagreement, but it was okay, because it's okay to disagree.
One.
And then, of course, our press corps back there, Mr. Stout. And we're missing, yes, from the Web Weekly, and we're missing Pat and the other reporters from the Sun Gazette. And of course, we have Mr. Boji, right, Mr. Boji, who I've known actually since I was over at the federal court. Did your name escape me temporarily? Yeah. And then, of course, we have prior commissioners here, you know, Ernie Larson and Jeff Ralph, and Jack McKernan was here, and I don't know if there are any other, well, he mentioned two. Bob Weiss was a state rep. But we, all the work we've done has been because of the work they did, you know? We have, we have, you guys gotta help me out here because I'm losing my.
How about you want me to call some other people?
No, we have, we have our Mr. Forrest Lehman, right? I think the public needs to know about them and the work that's done behind the scenes, you know? He took a lot of heat this year, but he did things by the book. The man's an Eagle Scout. Well, I mean that because he has integrity, and he made a point of making sure he knew what the law was with regard to the elections. He wasn't shooting from the hip, and he took a lot of heat personally, but he did what was right. And that's important for our, and the three of us had full confidence in knowing that he was doing what the law required. And Mr. Huffman, our newly second-term registrar and recorder, who's done a fabulous job of trying to preserve our history, right, with books that were deteriorating. It has, as you said, it's been a team effort by everybody. I don't know, the treasurer is here. The newly elected treasurer, right, second term, right? Who also has worked to try to get the men to see things from a different perspective. Because sometimes we men see the world from one perspective, and we need to try to see it from other perspectives too. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say Mr. Fink is here. And Mr. Fink and I have had a long history together. What's that? But the truth be told, that we've both, I think, and I think you reflected this at the chamber meeting, we've both grown a lot in terms of our understanding of what each, and appreciation of what each does in their role as the chamber and their role as an elected official. That doesn't mean I won't be bugging you about the hotel time.
I would be disappointed if you didn't.
I know you would. But I.
Can I have Michelle Becker too?
Yeah, that's fine. Michelle Green.
Yes.
She's great.
She, Michelle Green is an example of a constituent who comes to the meetings and challenges us with questions. An attorney herself, right? She challenges our, what we're doing, and she challenges us to make sure we're doing it properly. And there are other folks here. Who have we missed?
Is there anybody in the hallway or?
No. But listen, Jim Dunn, no, listen. No, 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 Jim Dunn. Jim, you should stand up, seriously. He's been a township elected official for eighteen years. He brought to the commissioners and single-handedly, along with Brian Almond, did the work to get, on the other side of this river, and an entire, which the county, the county put up the money, but came through. We didn't have to pay for it, we got money from the state, right? To put in that conservation district that's gonna allow people to check into a hotel, pay their hotel tax, which is gonna go to the county, walk across the bridge to a conservation area for bird watching, for getting into the river. One of the things that amazed me, I didn't grow up here, is you can't necessarily get on the river around here, unless you've got a river line. I thought, oh my God, I grew up on Long Island, we can get to the ocean through public beaches. That's gonna be a place for people, ordinary people in this community, to get on the river. And that's gonna be huge. And we thank you, Jim, really, for the work you did on that. Absolutely. It wouldn't have happened without you, there's no question. So anyway, thanks to all of you. It has been a great time, and it's been a lot of fun. And not so many headaches, but.
Listen, neither one of you are going anywhere because, as I've been kidding you for several months now, that they'll be at future meetings because anyone that's familiar with the Muppets, and two old guys are sitting about. There they are. The quarters of the back of the commissioners' room heckling us. They'll be heckling us, so. So we look for, but on a serious note, it's been a pleasure to serve with you both. As I highlighted, you see the accomplishments. We got things done. We did as a team. It wasn't just the three of us, it was the six hundred-plus of us in this county, from elected officials to the department heads to the regular workers every day that come to work and put a ton of time into their jobs to make us look good. And you're only good, as good as the people that surround you. And we're surrounded by a lot of good people.
And there's some who aren't here today, and I mean this, and I think all three of us mean it sincerely. The Controller's not here today, but she has done her darndest to make sure that we comply with the law, which we have, and she's done, and has made a strong effort to do that. We may disagree, and we're gonna wait to hear the decision from the Court of Appeals, but we respect and we appreciate her. And I'm trying to think of what other elected officials, Commissioner. We've got all of them.
DA, yeah.
The DA, the DA, we have, we've worked with all these folks, the attorney, who else? Judges, the courts, yep. The coroner, yes, absolutely. We need to thank the coroner for also the years and the people on his staff.
We found him a home.
Yes.
Great news, and again, it's, you're only successful, as successful as the people that surround you. And because of their success, it makes us all a success as a team. Thank you. We want to thank everybody for attending today, this marathon meeting. We want to thank everybody for attending today, this marathon meeting to close out of 2023. And Director, you have anything?
Oh, we got-
Oh, we got, I'm sorry, we got public comment, public comment from the audience. Yes, I apologize.
Mr. Dunn, you can go first.
One step behind, okay. Yeah, public comment. Yeah, Mr. Dunn.
Yes, thanks, Rick and Tony. It's been a lot over the years, but I'm mostly here to, to thank you for, for two reasons. Your investment in infrastructure and quality of life. So Rick was talking about the Robert Porter Allen Natural Area and with the county's investment with that, we were able to leverage that into a NACA grant, which is North American Waterfowl Act. This is the hardest grant in North America to get. This is Mexico, Canada, the United States. It's never been awarded in Pennsylvania, but it was awarded to us. A million dollars and we used it to restore four wetlands across the state. First and probably only time to ever receive that. And it comes directly from the action of this board. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And, and the other investments with that would be like the Ridge Trail and what DCNR is doing in Loyal Sock Creek and Pine Creek, coming closer to making Lake Hummy County the recreational center for the state. And although at this point, it doesn't necessarily put a lot of heads in beds, it does sell a lot of coffee, beer and burgers and tremendously improves the quality of life for the citizens here, which helps with recruiting and retention for the hospital and other institutions in the area. It's tremendous value to us and your support in that area has been tremendous and thank you. And the other is in infrastructure because nothing functions without infrastructure. And if I hear bridge bundling one more time, just so you know, there was 52 structurally deficient bridges in Lake Hummy County. You may have heard that before and you guys have taken what, 18 or 19 off the list? And I hope in the next round that we'll take the critical piece of infrastructure that protects all of our water source for the area on, on the list. And the next board will continue this investment in a bridge bundling program. Having, you know, adequate infrastructure is probably the most important thing for the safety of your community and the recruiting intention of, of, you know, what we need to have functioning society. And the action with the bridge bundling program has been tremendous and, you know, thank you so much for that. Long meeting.
Thank you.
Good comments.
Yeah. You take care.
Thank you.
Been waiting for this day for a long time. I got to go back and finish cooking food, so I can't be too long. I had no idea you guys were done. Well, you have 11 hours, nine minutes and 42 seconds left with us. I have good news, good news. Rick, we're going to take your emergency desk alarm, Kenny's going to take it out, we don't need that anymore. Scott, we're going to the health center and taking your blood pressure, Matt, you won't need that anymore.
I'm not on any.
Tony? Tony, we're going to give-
Find your guns.
We're going to give, we're going to find your gun eventually, someday, probably down in Philly. And we're going to give Anthony Jr. your boxing gloves. So we won't need any of that. Anyway, it's been quite a ride. I have to say, and I say this a lot, I end up speaking for others when maybe they are too shy to speak. But I did hear long ago that the reason that you don't meet with me isn't because you don't like me, it's because you want me to wear him down rather than me to wear you guys down when I bring in my, my maturo. I think you've said to me, I've come pretty prepared when we come in. I do have to say, from the sheriff's perspective, from my office, I've always had support from commissioners. Sometimes not as fast and not as quick as we want government to work, but with the huge challenges that we've had with security in, this is my 14th, end of my 14th year now, the world has changed completely in how we deal with everything we deal with. COVID was an unimaginable event. Commissioner Metzger, when you said about how often we met, or Commissioner Embito, we literally met under the leadership of the Colonel every day for at least a year, weekends, holidays, every single day. It was a huge challenge, but we came together as an elected official group, as a department head group, and we got through it. Didn't always agree with everything, but we certainly got through it. From the resource side of the sheriff's office, you've always listened to what we've needed to provide better support. We never, when, when, Scott, when you were a young APO officer, I was a young officer, we never had deputies on the floor, the floors of the courthouse. We have deputies, we have 13 courts and right now, except for the MDJs, I'll talk about that in a minute, we have deputies assigned to every courtroom in the courthouse, which is five, which is five trial judge courtrooms and then two family court hearing officers. We have deputies assigned every single day, all day long, because of what, what goes on. We, we screened very aggressively. I think last year, we, we intercepted 40 or 45 guns coming into the courthouse, about 1,200 other weapons. And the work just doesn't stop and you've always been there to support all those initiatives that we needed. The civil unrest, the equipment, Rick gets a buy for that because I don't believe, I don't believe that he was informed, but that's okay. As far as how, how he thought he should have been informed, but the bottom line is, once he had known about the project and he told us, once he realized the importance of it, you came, you came through. You know, we, we had those groups coming in and they, they converged in the city and we had to have huge resources available. And without going into, you know, security details, we had a huge hidden, almost armada ready to roll if we had to roll. We had one small skirmish that occurred in Breeden Park and we stopped it within minutes. And great part because of what you've done to help support the sheriff's office and what the Colonel has done. So it's kind of bittersweet. I'm looking forward to the new commissioners, I've already started to drive them nuts with orientation and transition and I'll continue to educate our, our two new commissioners. But I want to thank you personally for what you've done and don't ever hesitate, if there's anything we can do to help you from the sheriff's side, let us know.
Thanks.
Thank you. Great sheriff.
Any bells from the public? The audience, Forrest?
I guess it is good afternoon now. We're saying a very long goodbye to two county commissioners, which is fitting and proper. But as I was thinking about this, I realized from my perspective, I think about, in addition to the two of you, all the other local elected officials all over this county who will be stepping down at the end of the year from terms of office. Township supervisors, borough councils, school directors, all people who came to us from the ranks of our citizens. And they'll be returning to the ranks themselves when those terms of office end at the end of this year. But that's where they came from first. They were citizens first and they stepped forward. They came in, in many cases to voter services, they filed petitions to run for public office. And Teddy Roosevelt believed it was essential for citizens to enter public life and assume mantles of leadership and responsibility. He talked about it, he gave a famous speech about it in Paris in 1910. He called it citizenship in a republic, but we know it more commonly today as the man in the arena speech. And in that speech, he contemplated to his audience what conditions needed to be met for a democratic republic to thrive. And he argued that the quality of the individual citizen is supreme. So he put it right back on the citizenry. He believed the only way for it to endure was for the average citizen to not only do his or her duty in their everyday lives, but to also heed that call to do more. And so that's why we need to be thankful for those who heed the call to these elected positions because it's been said today that serving as an elected official has become increasingly complicated, increasingly thankless as a job. And in the case of the school directors, the borough council, the township supervisors, a lot of these offices, they're not even paid, but citizens came forward anyway. They stepped into the arena to do the work and that's what Roosevelt calls it. He calls it the arena, the man in the arena, the person who is willing to go out there with the spotlight on them and make decisions and endure the slings and the arrows that inevitably result from that, knowing that no matter what they do, half the people will disagree. You stepped forward to become part of the public life of this county, to become caretakers of an institution that must survive beyond us, that has to grow beyond us. The first commissioners of this county, they were elected back in 1795. They took office in 1796 when George Washington was wrapping up his first term as president. And you are part of that history now. There may already be some dust collecting on you, you may need to brush that off. But Roosevelt respected those citizens who put themselves out there to serve in public life because he believed it was absolutely essential to sustaining the republic, which he called himself, he called it a gigantic social experiment. And because he put that emphasis, that value on citizens entering public service, he also had some blunt words for the critics who sit outside the arena, I guess you could call it the chief seats. You know, the critics who think, maybe they could have done things differently, maybe they could have done them better. And he said about them, quote, "It's not the critic who counts. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who does actually strive to do the deeds." I'm really boiling his speech down. You should all read his speech to the swab on, it's very good. So maybe you made some mistakes, however long you've been doing this, maybe you have regrets, maybe you could have done some things differently or better, but you know what? That's life. That's just how it goes. Roosevelt is saying that what matters is that you and the other citizens across this county, whose terms of office are ending, they all came forward to do the work and we need that civic spirit and engagement. We need more of it from more people. I see that need every local election year on the ballots I have to put together where we've got too many offices that are empty of candidates. So thank you for your public service. Thank you for your time, your energy, your dedication. Thank you for stepping forward. I think if Teddy Roosevelt was here, he would say bully for you, but I'll just say take care and best wishes in your future endeavors.
Thank you. Forrest. Mr. Stout, I think you have your article for next week right there.
And by the way, thanks for the article. It was very nice. Larry.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience?
Mr. Lehman, you raise a really good point, those school directors and the local officials who are not necessarily being acknowledged and they should be, because that is really a volunteer position and they go to meetings and they're the ones who enable us. When Commissioner Metzger said we gave each school district $200 per student during COVID to make sure everyone had a crumb boat, it's because those school boards were there to do what they had to do and, and we thank them. We depend on them and the township supervisors and the borough officials.
Okay. Online. Online comments?
Yep. Jacob Stoffer first, Keystone Chief first, William Fenderston, still nothing on nonprofit. Property ownership is a right and a responsibility to the community. Keystone Chief, to not reassess the property values in the county would be irresponsible and will continue to gut programs and services for our most vulnerable citizens. Thomas Adams, I am sorry for not being able to attend the meeting in person. Thank you, Rick and Tony, for your service and more importantly, your friendships. I sent an email to the commissioners as my comments were too lengthy for me to send via the live chat. Please pass the email on to the new commissioners too. I wish you all a happy and prosperous new year. Thomas Adams, P.S., thank you Scott and Matt for your service.
Thank you, Thomas Adams.
Thank you. And last thing I'd like to do is bring the families up of Commissioner Musser and Commissioner Embito for a photo. And our meeting's adjourned until next year, 2024. Thanking everyone for attending and have a safe and happy new year. For everyone else, please, one sec, we have a small, we have a get together in the back room here for commissioners who would like to stay.
Take a picture for us. Come on. Hey, Rocco. Take a picture for us. Come on up here.
And then we'll get a picture of them.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Rocco. Come on.
All of us together. We're going to get all together, definitely get covered here.
I got you.
Oh, no, no, no.
You got to turn. Turn your body. That way, there you go.
Ready, kid?
Happy retirement.
Leslie, can you take one more?
Yeah.
Give her that photo.
Hi, Tommy. Good. I know you too, it's been a long time. That's right, I know. How are you?
I have plenty of pictures of you.
I know, I know. Yeah, they were-
Oh, they have. Oh, okay.
Keep looking.
Does my camera not work?
Oh, no, I'm taking lots.
Oh, okay. Tell him my son that.
Press the red button.
Oh, come on. Come on, Rocco, I know that.
He's congratulating you guys.
He's excited about that.
I come here.
Yeah, because they're going to, it's going to be sweet.